Move closer, you'll go twice.
I'd like to call door to the Avalon City Council meeting of August 7th. And if we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would just like on behalf of the City Council to wish Hernandez a speedy recovery. You may say, "A speedy recovery." I notice he's on his feet, but we want him back in his seat. So hopefully we'll see him soon. And we want to congratulate Jen and Jordan Monroe for their little baby boy, Wilder. I know they're all doing very well and we're very excited for them. Okay? And if we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Albers?
Present.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And I'd like to state that Councilmember Hernandez will not be in attendance today.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, there are no presentations. Do we have announcements and written communication?
I have no written communications. I have a couple of quick announcements. City staff will be meeting with the public trash contractor this, at the end of the week, and we will be negotiating the term and coming back at the next City Council meeting, hopefully with his contract. With the City Attorney's Office, we have developed our policy and procedures for a blue curb request, and it's been under review. And hopefully that will be on the next City Council meeting also. Just to remind everybody, the Assemblymember O'Donnell will host a town meeting on September 13th at the Avalon Grill from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. The medical cannabis delivery business permit application, we are two weeks behind, so this will be on the September 4th meeting. So the four people that are on the committee to review things are established. And we did send letters to Thomas Safran and Eucalyptus Hill, as well as RSG, because I wanted to compare all three to see what we -- we haven't heard back from anyone yet.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Department head reports. Who would like to begin?
It would be me, of course. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Good evening. Got a few items tonight, so hopefully I can get this done quick. So for some updates on some projects, public beach road revetments, all the damage that we had during the 2014 event, mainly Hurricane Marie. We met with the consultants, contractors, in a field review on how to proceed with bid documents to facilitate the repairs this last week. Determined that it's best three phases, to go through it in three phases. And we're going to attempt to go with an emergency work project because of the amount of damage that still exists out there that you don't see from the road, but you do see coned off areas. There's 31 areas that have, some of them, 10 of them are very significant in size. And so if we can get the permit agencies to allow us to just repair those holes, we would first do that. Then we would come back in a second phase and actually armor those, because they likely will not allow us with that fast permit to be able to go out there and put the rock, big rock, that we need to armor it. And that would be at a later date, probably about five months later when we get the permits for that. And then we would be looking long-term, where we would go out for grant funding to put four to 10-ton rock on the face of that revetment and build it further out into the water so that it could withstand those events. And what you'll see is that concrete go away that's on top of that rock, because that rock really needs to have that coarse voids in it to slow down the velocity of the waves. And so that's what you'll see. And by doing that, hopefully we get the width, so that we can actually put that complete street out there all the way to that fence down there at that southerly end, so that we can put the, get a ped bike facility along the edge of that road and get everybody operating in their own areas. Okay? So if approved by the permit agencies, that will proceed in early fall with that emergency work. The Green Pier repairs, again, same consultants, same contractors. We were looking how to proceed with the repairs to some of the piles out there. Again, it was really a three-phase approach, an emergency work, if we can get Coastal Commission to buy off on that. But then we're going to be looking for a longer-term, five-year contract, where we can get the consultants, contractors, and permit agencies signed up on a five-year basis to do repair work, repair-type maintenance, so that we're not spending a lot of money, like we were trying to get this going. And we received proposal from our engineering firm, you know, almost $150,000 in engineering just to prep to go out to get some repair work done. We don't want to do that. And we also don't want to get permits every time, so we would get an M.O.U. with the permit agencies that would be on a five-year duration. So and then, so the second phase would be that longer-term, so emergency work, second phase, longer-term. And then we'd also build in, what is the ultimate long-term improvements needed to make the pier what it could be. Okay? And then the Five Corners Complete Street Project, we met with the consultants, utilities on the utility relocation work on that. That's one of the big items that will slow the project down if we don't get on top of it. We also submitted an active transportation program grant application that has funds from the feds and then also SB 1 funds in it. And we met with the stakeholders, various stakeholders, when we put that application together, one of the requirements to receive points on that application. Pretty healthy document, and we submitted that on the 31st. That would provide the match funding plus, so the city would have no cost to it if we are successful. And it looks like a really good application.
Who actually put the application together?
Between Townsend, our grant consultant, city staff, and then the same team that we have working on the project.
Okay.
Okay? All of those put in to facilitate putting this together. And that's why it turned out to be a very high-quality product. So, and that's usually because it's very competitive for this money. And that's what you need to do to be competitive. Okay? And the Pebbley Beach Road lift station, we met with the consultants and E.S., our contract wastewater treatment provider. And we viewed the plans for the final repairs in the field last week, and we should be ready to go to bid about the end of August here. So we'll bring plans to you next meeting for approval, and then we'll be seeking to go out to bid. Mole Phase 1, the plans are 100% now. We have the Coastal Commission permit being heard at the September meeting, and the Army Corps permit's already in hand. And next meeting you'll have the plans in front of you for plan approval, so we can go out to bid in September.
And do people, does staff go to those? Do we usually send somebody?
Yes, well, I'll actually attend.
Okay.
Bob, does fishing game get involved?
Excuse me?
Does fishing game get involved?
Yes. Well, no, not in that one. That one's not, didn't need a fishing game permit. So it was Regional Water Quality Control Board, Army Corps permit, those go hand-in-hand, and then the Coastal Commission. So sometimes fishing game is involved, sometimes they're not. It depends on what their jurisdiction is. For that type of project, they weren't. Okay? Because we had an existing structure, and we were, actually when we're in the project, very little in the water. It's really just the construction equip, you know, on the barge. Otherwise, we're putting a little bit of rock, I mean, maybe a dump truck load in, you know, for the revetment. Otherwise, most of the work's just on the bottom of the structure. Okay? So wastewater treatment plant, we have an energy on it tomorrow. And so that is by SoCal RIN, and they will complete the field work on that tomorrow. So just what, quickly, what SoCal RIN is, is the County of Los Angeles, Southern California Regional Energy Network, SoCal RIN, was created to harness the collective power of residents, businesses, and the public sector achieve an unprecedented level of energy savings across Southern California. So what is SoCal RIN? SoCal RIN programs are administered by the County of Los Angeles and funded by the California utility ratepayers under the CPUC. Okay? And then who's in the network? Three counties, 19 water agencies, three special districts, seven school districts, and 74 cities. Okay? So those services are to us, free to us for the audit. And then they also propose how to contract that out through savings, okay, and financing through savings. And that's, once we get done with the audit, all that information will be presented to you. Completed the field review of 206 East Whitley with the architect and city staff. We'll look at the feasibility of all five units. Okay? When I brought the architect out there, and I have remodeled that fifth unit, something like that fifth unit before, but when I first took a look at it, it looked like a pretty big endeavor, but, so we'll take a good look at that, too, so that we make sure that we're bringing the full picture to you if that fifth unit is available. The sewer lateral to bid will be out to bid at the end of August. I'll bring those plans to you here the next meeting for your approval on that. Beacon Street apartment stairlift, we received the info from the stairlift vendor, so Acorn Stairlift, they're in Southern California, but they also, their main office is in Orlando, and that was, some of the delay was getting the info from the Orlando office. We have that in hand now. I've completed the redo of the specs, and I'll send that over to CDBG tomorrow. And then their approval, hopefully their approval will come back in a day or two, and that'll allow us to go out, because we got to ask every time that we redo something. Otherwise, our federal funds could be subject to non-reimbursement. Okay? And then once that's approved, then we'll be hosting that on our public bid site. Development impact fees, we started the process, set up the stakeholder meetings for input. Target is to receive the input by the end of August. And the sediment study draft is complete, and it's getting my comments back to the consultant, and then the presentation will be next meeting. So pretty busy meeting this next time around. Any questions?
Yes, I have three, actually.
Okay.
On the sediment study, is there any discussion planned with the cross-channel carriers, the Express, Newport Flyer, and the Classic Cruises before that's all presented at the next meeting?
We can do that.
Probably, probably we could.
Okay.
And then two other questions not related to the study. One, when, you may not know this off the top of your head, but if you could help to just educate it either at the next meeting or separately. When the streets were coated approximately four years ago, there was a slurry?
Yes.
That was put on the streets?
Yeah.
So the question that was posed to me was, were the streets properly sealed? Because there's so much more pickup now from bits and particles that are, you know, flying around from that. So do you know if the streets?
Yeah, I have a lot of experience at slurry seals, and that was a rubberized slurry seal. It looks like it was a good job. Okay? So, but also there was some drive-through, you know, and some redos of that. And that's just trying to keep traffic off that while it cures, because it has a cure time of anywhere from three to eight hours, depending on what, and out here where it's very damp, it takes a longer time to cure. There are some additives we do add to it to make it cure quicker. It looked like it was prepped right, you know, from what I'm seeing from some of the cracked ceiling and that was done and just the product. Usually those products last seven years, seven-year useful life. And you do, you know, once in a while you see some fines popping off the top of that, but that happens on asphalt, too. So that's called stripping, and that really is, you know, a product of just the asphalt itself, you know, becoming undone a little bit. UV hitting it, and that's how it ages, you know. But we, so if it's been four years and that's the spot it's in, I mean, another three years, I think it's going to hang in there very well. And then we should be back on top of it. That's what pavement management systems do. They say, "You got to be back on top. If not, you're going to be paying bigger bucks to get that done." The worst thing that's happening in this town, though, is the death by a thousand cuts. It's, it's just, we have aged infrastructure, and so our sewer, our water, and then we get something done, and then we're right back into it. And how you get on top of that, I mean, that really takes some money, you know, to be back in all those facilities down below before you get completed.
So that leads me to my last question for you, which is, who specifically signs off on the cuts in the streets? Whether it's, you know, Edison, Dordel, whoever refills the streets and patches, who signs off that it's complete?
It would be Public Works and under the Public Works Director. So whether that's an interim patch, I mean, we've got all kinds of conditions out there where it'd be the interim patch, and they're just going out there and getting it done in the middle of the night, and now, or it's happened in the day and they're doing a patch. But yeah, some of the patches, we need to get back on them and say, "Come back and fix this interim patch." Until we get something where we can put hot mix, we have the ability to have our own hot mix here, then we could do and put more permanent patches on a more periodic basis instead of waiting for two, three years to get a project together. Now we're tearing apart the whole town again, just like we just did, and putting, you know, hot mix asphalt, which is going to hang in there better. Our cold mix here, though, is good if it's done right. It is good and holds up pretty good. But if it's just thrown in there, and that kind of thing does happen in the middle of the night, as you can imagine, if we're just plating it or throwing some mix back in, and you don't want to make the noise, it doesn't get compacted like it should be, so it should be readdressed.
I just, going along with what you were saying, death by a thousand cuts.
Yeah.
I mean, our streets are just torn apart again, but, you know, when I run in the morning, I'm constantly staring straight down at my feet because I'm afraid of where, you know, where I'm stepping and being cautious of that. So I just notice it a bunch more now, that there's more and more patches in the roads.
Yeah, there's less activity right now, and I need to get out, you know, I've been in the office here this last two weeks just trying, with budget and all the other projects that's staying on. I'll get out in the field and I'll make sure that, look at each one of those and have, you know, like, just like on Casino Way, we had the S.D.E. come back and put the hot mix. They actually brought in a small hot mix truck with a load of hot mix on it and redid that for us, you know, because that was a brand-new paved road. And got that done. So it shows you that it's possible, but that's real expensive, too, to get that done. So it's best, like we were proposing before, is if there's some way that we can get a reclaim system here, and we can use some of that and have Public Works crew go out there, whether it's once a quarter, you know, we go out there and start catching up to those. And then the program would pay for that. Pay for that machine, pay for the crews to do that, and that, we wouldn't be waiting for three years. We'd be doing that. And then that would help facilitate some of our own patching and betterment of the roads.
Good plan.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmembers? No? No other questions? Thank you.
Good evening. Captain John Hawking from L.A. County Sheriff's Department. I just want to let everybody know tonight is National Night Out. Basically, what National Night Out is, throughout the nation, they have crime prevention information, the community working with law enforcement, but not only law enforcement, all first responders. For Avalon, we have a display out at the sheriff's station today. The display consists of items that the sheriff's department owns and runs, along with items that our search and rescue team, the City of Avalon Fire Department, and we're giving tours of the sheriff's station. It's from, starts at 5:00. It already started, and it runs till 7, 8:00, depending on how many people show up. So we'd like to invite everybody to come out. If you have any questions about law enforcement, please stop by and see us. We'd be happy to answer anything.
Great.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You're safe.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. Excuse me. I'm very pleased and proud to report that over the, on Saturday, a joint public safety team participated and supported the VFW Catalina Post with participating in the 31 Ruck Veterans Charity Event. Some of the members even completed a 31 miles in eight, in 12 hours.
Wow.
I'm also pleased and proud to report that August 1st marked two years' safe work for the Avalon Fire Department. So I know we talked about that a few weeks ago. Super pleased and proud, the culture of safety that I have from the men and women of the Avalon Fire Department. And then, lastly, we've been very busy with calls and responses, the town full of people, including several significant events over the past weeks, including a plane crash, a vehicle that went over the side, and a sinking boat that was very, very nearly sank. All three of those operations were with multiple agencies working together for successful outcomes.
Wonderful.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for me?
And you had some heat calls?
Pardon me?
Have you been, any calls in the last three weeks because of the heat?
We get a few here and there, typically where we start having problems, when it goes on for multiple days. It's very hot, and then sometimes older folks at home, where it's very hot inside the house, and it just goes on for days, even weeks at a time. That's when we start having problems. So it does happen, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. No questions?
Good afternoon, Council. I'd like to first of all, start off by saying, Chief Mike Krug is, was one of the guys for the city that went the full 31 miles on this thing. So I think we need to give him a big... (applause) It was grueling, it was hot, and I made the first leg, but, but it's okay, I'm older than he is. But anyway, it was a great thing, and it was supported well. As far as the harbor concerned, the weekends, Thursdays through Sundays, we've been filling up inside and out, which is a good thing. Now that August has started, some schools have started back, so during the week, we're probably not going to be jam-packed in the harbor, but weekends are still going to be, going to be busy. We, last week, we had an extra cruise ship in, I believe it was the Crystal Serenity, and it came in on a Thursday, so that added extra, extra shekels in the pocket. This weekend, starting Thursday, there's a hurricane down south, Hurricane John, and that, we're starting to get predictions that we're going to get a south swell again, so depending on where it goes and how it goes, hopefully it'll go out towards Hawaii and it won't impact us like it did, like they were worried about last time. We got, we got off the hook last time and didn't have to deal with a bunch of surge. The other problem with that is that we're going to be experiencing some extreme high tides, 7, 7.1, and then 6.9, 6.8 going down through Sunday. So that's where we run into our issues on, you know, flooding and stuff. If that surge picks up at, during, right at the high tide, that could be a little crazy. So other than that, we've, you know, we're moving forward. We're, again, dealing with the people, we're dealing with the crowds, working close with the fire department on calls on sinking boats and stuff, so we're hanging in there. Any questions?
I haven't heard any complaints, but I'm curious, are we doing that little rake in the beach this summer?
Yes, ma'am. Every morning, 6:00 a.m. I have two trash boys out there.
I'm not that bad.
Raking the scum line.
Okay.
And packing it up, and Public Works is picking it up, so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we're doing that.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
J.J., I'm sorry, one question, because I don't remember. When was the last time that we did some pier piling repairs?
Several years ago.
I'm going to say eight?
I don't know exactly. I'm saying several years ago.
Okay.
And it's, right now, we're probably, we looked at, what, maybe five or six pilings that are either broken or need to be replaced. And a lot of those are fender filings, where the float sit up against and the boat sit up against the float. So it, the piers in some dire straits, which I'm sure we'll talk about later.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening. For our LCP update, we had our kickoff meeting last week with the Moffett-Nichol team and the city staff. We're currently in the data gathering stage. We have or will be reaching out to the Chamber and the Island Company for information that they may be able to assist us with. We've scheduled a short presentation for, by Moffett-Nichol at the next council meeting, where they'll be just discussing exactly what sea level rise assessment is and what the expectations are out of their study. And then in the following weeks, we will also be scheduling public workshops and stakeholder meetings to kind of focus in what kind of information we need and what impacts we need to address. Vons is proceeding on schedule. We've seen the installation of the final rooftop details, which include three gables that reach the 30 feet above finished floor height. Because the site had to be raised above the floodplain, the 30-foot dimension is not above the sidewalk, but above the finished floor, Vons added an additional bank of windows to an otherwise blank wall on the beacon-facing side. We required Vons to reevaluate the photometric levels to confirm that the light would not exceed the five-foot candle limit beyond the property line. Vons did that, and they were able to confirm that that extra bank of windows would not increase the glare to an unacceptable level. They've also agreed to add a tent to all six of those window groupings to further decrease the light coming, exiting the windows, and to also recreate, increase their resistance to the afternoon sun. The other thing that's happening is that in order to avoid moving the power pole on the Vons, on the Sumner side at the driveway, we're going to do a slight relocation on the driveway, and Mr. Greenlaw had a traffic engineer here this past week to assist us with that relocation. It's just a few feet in one direction. The zangray is proceeding. You're going to see windows going in up there. Their sewer lateral plans are still in plan check. The Hotel Atwater is proceeding on schedule. They are in the rough plumbing and rough electrical phase. And on the Planning Commission agenda this month, we have three transient rental applications, two of them at Hamilton Cove and one at Bahia Vista. We have two applications for exterior decks, and we have a conditional use permit to convert an existing bedroom to a density bonus unit. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
And we're going to have a joint meeting of the planning, with the Planning Commission?
Yes, I believe on the 27th.
Right. And what's that agenda?
It's to talk about the various housing issues. We're going to talk about density bonus, inclusionary housing, and accessory dwelling units, I believe.
Yeah, basically, your municipal code is out of date with respect to all the changes that the state legislature has imposed on housing. And so what we're going to be doing is, because you're ultimately going to be approving the municipal code revision of the housing, but the Planning Commission is the one that hear it, hears it. We thought it would make sense to have a joint meeting to make certain that any direction that you gave were concerns, the Planning Commission hears, and they're not, they're not laboring and then to give you something that the council doesn't like. So it'll be...
So will Elizabeth Hall?
Yes.
Be presenting a proposed ordinance and walking us through whatever options there are for us to...
I'm not, I know she'll be making a presentation. I don't know if it'll be the final ordinance or a draft, but, but, you know, I haven't...
Because I know that we've been hearing for a couple of years now, at least, that there are state requirements?
Right.
That we haven't made, so I'm assuming that there's some framework within which we would start.
Correct.
Okay.
And my understanding was that she would go over all the things that we are not in compliance with and how we can best move forward to get our code back in compliance with those state laws. And then then we'll...
Because originally, what the idea was and what's been stated is that, that the city attorney was going to be presenting an ordinance.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I did not understand that it would be a proposed ordinance.
Okay.
Because the ordinance would initially have to go to the...
No, I'm just saying that in the many times that this has been referenced and discussed, it was that the city attorney was working on revisions to our code to bring us up to the state code.
If it's in the form of normance, that would be great. That would certainly speed the process up.
And are we going to talk about CUPs there as well?
At the joint meeting, I don't think we were intended to, for transient rentals?
Yeah, because we, well, we've been talking about it. The Planning Commission came up with something, but it's not ever come back to us to discuss. Is, that's not appropriate to talk about at that meeting?
Well, you could add it. I mean...
I mean, it needs to be addressed at some point. So either it comes here, or we discuss it more in the joint, unless you say, you know, you all, the Planning Commission already gave their opinion, so we just deal with it at a different time?
I mentioned transient rentals at the last Planning Commission meeting about possibly going forward with considering how to get them out of the land use entitlement world, which is something we had discussed. And the Planning Commission wasn't clear that that had been the direction from the council. So I think if the council, I think we've talked about it back and forth so often, that if the council wishes to have the Planning Commission discuss how to possibly get it out of the land use entitlement arena, I think we just need that directive, and then we'll take it back to them.
That doesn't transfer with the property. Right. And I'll just, I'll find the memo that I did that said that that's completely unconstitutional.
To take it out of the land use entitlement?
Yes.
And instead make it a business license?
It's a, it's a land use permit, which runs with the land.
Right. And I think the goal was to reach a point where, when we give someone permission to conduct transient rental, that it would not be a land use entitlement. permission to conduct transient rental, that it would not be a land use entitlement, it would be like a business.
No, I understand what we're trying to achieve, but, but really what that comes down to is, so somebody sells their property?
Right.
And we now decide based on what? That we don't like the new people and they should or should not get a CUP?
No, it would be?
Or whatever you're going to call it.
We're changing what it is.
No, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, what the, what the discussion from the council was, was is there a way to amortize existing CUPs? And going forward, you don't allow any CUPs, but what you allow is for new applications, a personal permit that goes with that person.
And what are the standards, I mean, what are we judging that by?
No, we're saying that if, if I'm under the new permit and I sell my property to Annie, the permit doesn't automatically?
I know what you're trying to do, what you're trying to say is that the value that's attached to that permit travels, but that necessarily presumes that some people get it and some people don't. So you can't bank on it when you sell your property, and I'm just asking, because I'm assuming it's not the color of your skin, or your religion, or where you moved from, or how many people are in your family?
No, it's none of that.
It's none of that.
I think it's all about trying to figure it out.
Right, and what happened was, we presented, the council asked the Planning Commission if the Planning Commission would like to consider that, and the Planning Commission said no.
We'll go back and ask again.
Okay. But it seems like there's some support here among the city council people for that.
Yes, because of, part of it is because of what it does to the value of people's properties. And it's all about the value.
But that value only disappears if you give it to some, when they, somebody sells and not to others.
No, if you have a permit today, you keep the transfer, transferability of it. If you get a permit sometime in the future, then it's not transferable.
Right, but for, for those people that don't have one, the people who are buying, again, are you, are you threatening to deny it on some basis?
We're not threatening to deny it, it automatically goes away.
Right.
So if you buy the property, you automatically have to apply for a permit on your own.
So if I'm buying this property, the person who's selling it to me will be able to say, you're going to be able to rent this on every?
No.
No.
Well, I think, there's, I think there's still some, some details to be fleshed out on, on how we amortize the existing ones, so that we're not taking something away from the current owner, because they bought it with a permit. So if there's a way to break that chain in a way that the current owner doesn't lose something, but then if someone brand new comes in with a property that they've purchased that doesn't have a transient rental permit, they would go through a different process and they would, probably the same review process similar we have now, but it would belong to them, not the property.
Right.
So I think the challenge is, how do we break the chain of the land use entitlement in a way that it doesn't punish the current property owner, but doesn't necessarily transfer two or three generations down? And those are, those are things that we'll just have to see if it's even possible.
And again, we didn't pursue it once the Planning Commission said no. So we didn't develop the standards or, you know, go any further.
But we've been talking about, so I think it needs to come to a head at some point.
So if, so if I'm hearing a consensus that you'd like the Planning Commission to discuss it one more time, then that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for me?
Okay, do, is there something in our code about trailers? Like, like if we wanted to put in a trailer that comes in on wheels, but take it off on the wheels and put it on something else? Is there something in our code that?
That prohibits mobile homes?
Yes.
Or manufactured homes?
Yes.
There is some language in there, I don't recall exactly what it is, I can't, I'd have to look.
Oh wait, I didn't expect you to recite that.
I don't think there's anything that prohibits it, and now the, again, our code was adopted back in the day when manufactured homes and modular homes were not part of our world.
Right.
And so the nomenclature for what's a mobile home, a modular home, and manufactured is kind of blurred. So I'll have to look, I'm happy to get back to you with that.
Yeah, I'm, as there are different kinds of homes being constructed, it seems like if we're not, if we need to modernize a little bit.
Yeah, and sometimes, in some cities, the difference is whether you bring it in on wheels, but then you set it on a permanent foundation.
Right.
Or whether it stays on wheels and then it's treated differently.
Because my question would be, if it has wheels, but you take it off of wheels and you put it on some kind of structure, but would it be, would the floodplain issues come into effect if you know that you could put those wheels back on it and just drive it away?
Well, I think the floodplain issue is when the, the structure's there, it's occupied in the floodplain, so you want?
I guess if it was movable would be my question. If you, if you knew we were going to have a hundred-year flood, you could put the wheels on it and drive it away and take it out of danger. That's kind of what my question is.
I've never heard that.
The one flood we had, I think it was, took a drink that I was having at Villa Portofino and we were flooded. I mean, it, it took that long, when we had to flood that year.
But we had been having rain.
Yeah.
So you kind of know.
That was Baker Leve.
I think.
Oh, okay, anyway.
You know, I'll look, I'll look and see what the language is.
I'm sorry, you may relabor this. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we're good, thank you Amanda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I vaguely remember a discussion, Councilman Sampson at the time had made some deal with Mr. Rusak about additional parking in Vons, and it seems to me when I drove by Sumner, it looked like they had moved those picnic tables down, and I vaguely remember that that was the area, that there were going to be some additional parking places created for the Vons project?
On the original, on the original Vons site development plan, they had included the parkway on Sumner, because you know, we have the extra space where all the trees are on the Sumner, between Sumner and the miniature gardens. There was a plan to take the parkway out and put in some more additional diagonal parking between the Vons driveway and the driveway into the Island Company little parking lot before you get to the Plaza driveway. It was also something broached during the Mike Flynn parking. So we have actually asked Vons to go back to their engineer and give us a cost estimate for what it would cost to create that additional diagonal parking, so you would be going on the down bay side of the street. So you'd be on the same side of the street as Vons. And so that may be something that happens as we go forward.
But wait, did that answer your question about the park, the extra parking spaces?
I don't think they were, I don't think they were ever proposing to create the parking on the Island Company. What the Island Company was going to do was create a new bus turnaround in that parking lot, but that plan went away as well, that didn't go forward on the Island Company side.
What this refers to is one of the conditions of approval, I don't have them in front of me, required that Vons prepare for city approval of parking plan that would provide additional parking other than in the parking lot. So that is one of the conditions of approval. So they will have to do that, is, again, that's my recollection of what that condition applied.
I thought it was additional spaces, like so many additional spaces.
I just remember a handshake that indicates to me that somehow the Island Company was providing something, but okay, I'll go, I'll go back and look too.
Yeah, and I think that's why they included that additional street parking on their site plan, was in an effort to show that there was opportunity for additional parking. And I think that, at the time, Vons had indicated they would possibly share in the cost, so we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Little disconcerting.
Thank you.
If you guys would permit me to go, even though I'm not a department head, Dan has said I could go ahead of him, if that's all right with you all? Just two things, we also submitted ATP planning grant on July 31st, and that is to do a master plan for active transportation, taking into account all modes for the whole city, so we're hoping that we get that, that'll make us very competitive when we go after additional ATP grants. And thanks to Councilmember Cassidy's connection with Councilmember Busciano, City of Los Angeles, I was hooked up with Naveen Barry at the AQMD regarding possible funding to buy new buses, green buses that meet our needs, and they have a pretty good pot of money, and then the AQMD also has some other sources, so I'm going to be pursuing those and then hopefully coming back with some, some buses for you guys to decide on.
Great.
So great.
Any questions? Thank you very much for making us connect.
Audrey, we had talked about maybe upping the signage on the buses to let people know that they could do tickets?
Yes, we're working on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. With three weeks and a day to go, school going back, we're winding down some of our summer progr, summer programs. Last week was the last week of our adult women's basketball program, we had four teams for that. Saturday, we concluded our T-ball program, sluggers program for the summer. And then last night, didn't see anybody there, but we had six teams in a championship game that came out of it for the men's basketball. Single overtime, at the buzzer, at the end of overtime, a put-back shot for the championship team to win, so it was fun. Now, one team went up, the other team came back on them by about twelve points, fourth quarter, it evened out, they went into overtime, so a really well-spirited game. It was fun to see the team that lost actually hug it out with the team, it was just a fun, fun game for, for everybody. Programs that we still have got going, Bingo will continue Bingo Tuesdays and Thursday nights, they'll start here in fifteen minutes from six, six o'clock to seven o'clock, and that'll go through Labor Day weekend. Fishing Derby from seven to nine on Wednesday mornings, we'll continue that, and that's free for kids to fish. Tomorrow night is the third of four of the Movies on the Beach series in collaboration with Choices. The movie is Tangled, Disney movie Tangled, and that'll start about eight o'clock with refreshments as a fundraiser from Choices. We have our back-to-school beach party on the 27th of August, it's the Monday before they go back to school, we'll do that on South Beach again. And after that debacle of fireworks show, we had July 4th, expo shows who we contracted with are trying to make amends, they want to keep us in good graces and have offered two shows, free fireworks shows. We're working closely with the Chamber to, to pull this off, but the plan is to do the first one just to show that they, they want to show that they can do it before we get into July 4th of next year, so we're planning a Labor Day, Sunday, September 2nd, show, it'll be at eight-thirty, we'll have live music on the stage from six to eight-thirty in the fireworks show, about a sixteen to eighteen minute, maybe they'll throw a few extra ones in for us, starting at eight-thirty. So we thought it would be a great way to kind of finish up the, the summer, have it go out with a bang, and see what they can really do for us here in Avalon.
That's great, thank you.
Any, any questions for us?
Dan, I think they'll go back to school on the 4th.
The 4th?
Yeah, Thursday, Labor Day.
I think, don't they go on the 29th?
Uh-uh, they go back to school on the 29th.
Wednesday, the 29th.
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure you get them, get your kids there a little earlier.
Yeah, yeah. Dan, I was going to say something in Councilmember reports, but I, I thought it might be a much more positive way to introduce the subject if we sort of just had a little conversation. So the, I, you and I had talked yesterday or the day before about the swim float and this fabulous piece of equipment that we've put out in the harbor for our, our locals and visitors to enjoy, which obviously is very expensive, it's, you know, part of the programming that you've brought into the city. It's a really, really great opportunity for everybody to have an enjoyable time, but unfortunately, there's a lot of negativity around the swim float because of behaviors of, of some of the kids out there. And some of the, the, I actually tried today to have some more discussion to try to get some more positive feedback on it, because what I had received prior was just negative, negative, negative. And some of the previous comments that I've made is, I do notice that the paramedics, or I'm sorry, the, the lifeguards down on the pier do a really great job of monitoring as much as they can and, and calling things out and asking these kids to, you know, be respectful of visitors and whatnot. And I know that the city has had some staff pop in occasionally down there, but my response to the community has been, you know, if you're, if you're going to send your, your children out to play, you're responsible for your children, that it's not the city's responsibility to provide oversight for, you know, that type of activity unless we open and close it at certain times of the day and, and whatnot. So you had said a lot of positive things that had changed from last year to this year, and you had mentioned to me that you thought things had gotten better, and I was just wondering if you could speak to that, rather than me try to reiterate what you'd said?
Yeah, you know, it seemed last year there was quite a bit, especially with some of our older kids in the community, a lot of kind of ownership, entitlement to it, and you'd see them on the roundabout, which is the centerpiece, kind of circled in there, and a lot of the comments last year were cursing, there was pushing and shoving, and kind of a bit of a bullying mentality. I'm not going to say that's not happening this year, but I'm personally not seeing, and I'm in touch with the captain as well as some of the lifeguards, it doesn't seem to be as bad, we don't have our kids kind of just hanging out there. When I see it generally on the weekends, you know, later in the evening, a lot more, not just kind of hanging out, not just our kids, a little more interaction throughout the, the distance of the float. It did get off to a rocky start this summer, I certainly will tell you that, we put in a new piece and they just tore it up. We, we threatened to take it out and we ended up having to take it out, just, this particular piece. It was such a piece that you could really rock it, and they were having a different kind of fun on it that was, was made to have. So once that kind of went away after the first couple of weeks, I think things have settled down. You know, we've had a couple of incidents, we just had an incident just this past weekend, you know, somebody with, you know, a hurt wrist that had to be attended to, we had one shoulder, I think, earlier in the summer. So like a piece of equipment, we'd have in a park, that's kind of the mentality that we, you know, put it out there, and certainly we'd love to see some adult interaction. But it's, I think for the most part, it's been better than last year, and that's been positive. We were making some threats early in the summer that, well, pieces come out if, if need be, and a couple of days later, we took one piece just out in the session and they kind of like backed off.
Oh, good, okay, okay. So that was going to be a part of my comments was, you know, if, if, if it poses a danger and if kids are putting dish soap and actually causing the possibility to really hurt someone, then, you know, I feel we have a responsibility not to provide that kind of fun, because it's being taken advantage of. But I'm glad to hear that things are getting much better, and I'll just end my comment that I think it's a parent's responsibility to have oversight over their children, it's not the city's. And, you know, our, our job is to provide activities, programming, you know, things to do, nice parks, safe equipment, but it is the parent's responsibility to actually be out there and monitor.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, just a couple of things to report. Finally freed up some time for Matt to work on the fiscal year seventeen audit, we're making significant progress, hope to get that done within the next forty-five days. And then Matt also attended a workshop with the MTA along with Audra with regard to their annual audit, we're in the middle of that right now, it's due at the end of August, and it's just a bunch of forms we have to fill out regarding all the revenues that we receive through the LA County and the MTA. And then I had staff contact the state, just in case there was any unclaimed funds up there for us to obtain, and we did, we found some money, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Yay!
Thank you very much, any questions?
It's a bit hells.
I thought there was going to be a few more zeros behind that, but oh well. Okay. Earl, ooh, no, Councilmember reports.
City manager.
The city manager reports, dang.
No, I do not.
City attorney report.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, see, I knew that, that's why I skipped him. Councilmember reports, who would like to begin?
The junior person has to start, isn't that the rule now?
I don't know, you made that one.
I'm going to be super quick, because I've just asked all my questions, so I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you a break. I attended the Gateway City's Council of Government meeting on August 1st, and, you know, it's, it's a slower time of the year for, for the COG, but I am pleased to report that we, the COG will be doing another retreat, and we'll be making it an annual retreat here in Avalon. So sometime next spring, we'll be welcoming our elected officials from our Gateway City region again.
Great.
Yeah, really good.
Okay. So today was my LA County Commission, Local Government Services Commission, and we had two very interesting presentations. One, the Los Angeles County has a operations, or I'm sorry, Office of Education Commission or? or I'm sorry, Office of Education Commission or Body Agency. And the gal who's in charge of their nutrition services came and spoke, as well as the person who does recycling in the schools, both of which programs we do not have. And I'm gonna, I wanna work with Cindy and the mayor, I think, and some ideas in what programs we might be able to do and utilize some of those resources. If Long Beach Unified just doesn't have the funding or they will to do it, I, I think it's really important that maybe we can incorporate it in some of our recreation programs. They have training for people to talk to kids about nutrition. And then, of course, the recycling, I think, is really important, too. So, those were, those were good presentations. I did have a question, because I know that, or I believe that the Sheriff's Department has cards that they hand to people if they're, for instance, on Front Street, that kind of reminds people of what the rules are. Do our code enforcement officers use those?
No, and I'm not aware of what they pass out.
I think it basically says, you know, like in Avalon, you have to leash your dog. You can't, you bring your dog in front, you know, just some of those. You can't ride your bike on Front Street. And the reason I thought of that is because I was walking to City Hall, and a gal, there was a woman with a dog on a leash, and she was walking. And then about 20 feet behind her, there was this little dog. And I stopped thinking, oh, he must be lost. And she said, oh, that's my dog. And I said, well, where's his leash? Oh, wow. And she kind of blew me off. Blew me off. But I thought, you know, is there an easy way, or, you know, a kind way to remind people, no smoking? I mean, really, things have gotten a little out of control. And, you know, I appreciate that, even if they went out once or twice a week and handed out the cards, if you've got people who are here for multiple days, at least they get the message and maybe curtail their behavior.
Is it like a little playing card, as simple as that?
You know, like a postcard. You go to Vistaprint, and you can have thousands printed for $100.
Yes, that's exactly what it is. It's a small little card that I made up, and it just basically tells the rules on Front Street. And what I can do is meet with code enforcement and Denise, and we can put together something so they could have it. And I'll tell you, it works very well, because we'll be walking down the street, just like you, we'll see a person with a dog either off the leash, or even if it's on the leash and it's not supposed to be out on Front Street. We say, hey, your dog's not supposed to be out here. Here's the card. Please look at number four, five, whatever one it is. And they apologize, and head right off Front Street. So, it works pretty well. I'll work with Denise on that.
And maybe we could get a big stack of them for Jesse, since he's the first line of defense. And, you know, if he sees a dog or a bike coming off the boats, maybe he could hand them a card. Or somebody who gets off the boat immediately and smokes a cigarette.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We've dropped them off at the golf cart rentals. We've dropped them off at a couple of the places where they pick up the maps for the, the visitors, getting maps, so they can pick one of those up, so.
Cool. Thank you. Good.
Okay. And then, because I had sent some examples of California cities that do have standards and a procedure for applications to be made for handicap parking and for curb painting. And I forgot, did I send you Long Beach's? Because that one was...
I'm not sure if Long Beach was in there, Pam, but we...
Okay. Well, then, because I thought I went back and looked at it, and I didn't see Long Beach, but that was actually the one that I thought was the best.
We found some other cities, and that's what Gabby was really working on that task.
Yeah. I'm, I'm glad that's gonna come back, because as, I'm sure our city attorney knows, because they did the amicus in a losing case, where the city was sued because they had no process for, under the ADA. And the court ruled back in 2014 that cities have to have a basis on which they grant people that permission. So, I'm glad you guys are working on that. And then, my final thing that I wanted to bring up for the next meeting, I think that the situation with Vons is gonna come to a head pretty quickly. And I would like us to have an item for a discussion of permit parking in the flats.
That goes along with that whole thing. There's a couple of those, we keep calling them low-hanging fruit, that could go into that meeting as well.
Okay.
Like on some, there're, you know, there's a few things that we could probably find some consensus, I believe.
Yeah. I just think for the people who live in the, in the flats, it's not fair to put the burden on them.
No, it already is a problem.
To not have a place to park their vehicles. I mean, I don't think we can do guest parking like many, many cities do, but certainly for the people that live there.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Last Thursday, I went to a meeting of Propel LA and the 88 Cities, which was a collection of consulting firms, cities, people worried about getting, trying to move LA forward. They came out with some really good stuff. They've got some good information on monies that are available for homeless, and they've got some information about some alternatives to, to the high cost of rents, which I will give to Ms. Ratty, because I forgot to bring it tonight. I'm so sorry. But it was also the thing where it took, here's, here's why we live in Catalina. I was in, started off in Long Beach in a condo, went to Hollywood, took two hours. Was at the meeting for six hours, left Hollywood, whatever time was, took two hours to get back to Long Beach. It's just inhumane, inhumane.
And what was the group, the Copel, what did you?
Propel.
Propel LA.
Okay.
I want to thank Devon. I got the rough draft. They shared it with me, she shared it with me yesterday on the, the Employee Housing Survey. And then I spoke with Amanda, and Amanda pulled up the one that she had created. So, I kind of looked at those, returned those to Denise to find a way to maybe meld those together, because there was good on, on both of those. So, I want to thank Devon and Amanda both. And yellow jackets, I just want to say, I don't know where they are, but we're very happy.
It's been a good year.
Okay, there's no bees, but there are no yellow jackets. And, and way, but the program only, the program only eradicates the yellow jackets. That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
No bees.
Yeah. No bees go, go in there. I don't know how, but they don't. So, anyway, I want to thank them, Popeye and Company, for, for doing that, whatever the reason. It's wonderful. And illegal dumping, I never, I touched on that with Denise today. It's, it's crazy that people illegal dump when they get three, can get three pickups a year. And so, maybe with the new gentleman, maybe in English and Spanish, they can find some things to put on people's, you know, door hangers or something. But it is ridiculous.
So, Sienna, aren't, we do have a new person?
Yes. I believe his name is Jay Fowler. He came in, and he introduced himself to Bob Greenlaw, Jamie, Jordan, and myself.
I think he was intending to come and say hello at a council meeting, at an upcoming council meeting. I think he said, they're gonna reach out.
And we, we want to review the contract and tighten up on some things, too.
Okay. So, Annie, can I just chime in on your illegal dumping, which is so unbelievably frustrating? We, I think we all know the same individuals who email us and let us know, hey, there's this been dumped here, there's this been dumped there. And, you know, it seems like it always ends up on the island company's property, and then the island company has to expend the resources, which, you know, it doesn't matter whose property it is. Somebody else has to expend the resources to dump other people's trash that they just feel is appropriate to leave around. I mean, how, how do you combat that in town?
Well, I know. And, and it's not just on island company properties, but since they happen to have the most, they seem the most impacted. But, and this would be a chicken way out of it, but I mean, so if I have an ice chest that I don't put in front, or whatever I have in front of my house, and I don't put it in front of my house, but I put it in that vacant lot, that still is a large item pickup. So, maybe they could, once a year, or something, do that to accommodate those people that are dumping the mattresses, whether it's mattresses in front of my house, or I dump it up on that hillside, or on the roadway, maybe it's the same. I don't, I don't know. Maybe that's a discussion.
Well, actually, so if somebody dumps something on an empty lot, then we get the call, and it gets red-tagged, and because of that process that we call CRNR, they come and pick it up. But that property doesn't get, particularly since it's an empty lot, too, that they're not getting tagged, as that's your first pickup of your freebies. And, you know, we get the mattresses, we get the TVs, we get...
But do we pay an extra fee for that?
Yes, we sure do. It's in the contract.
So, we should put it on somebody's property and call, and call it a large item pickup, and then we don't have to pay for it.
Does anybody miss the, when you could go out at 4 o'clock in the morning and get other people's fun stuff?
That's why you bring up the large item pickup, Citywide.
I loved that. I thought it was environmentally appropriate. Things got upcycled, recycled.
Well, see, that's a, that's a good idea. I didn't know that was ever actually a thing.
No, we did. Twice a year, I would get up at 4 o'clock in the morning and drive around with Amanda and find really fun stuff.
Thank Amanda, she got to really guess.
It was.
It's repurposing.
We did. A lot of stuff got repurposed. We didn't limit how much people could put out. So, I'm, you know, it'd be interesting to know what Joanne thinks about the difference in how much is getting picked up now versus when we had that program. Maybe we could do a combination of the two.
Two individuals in one Citywide?
Right, something, yeah.
That's positive. I like that.
Okay. All righty. Oral communication. This is opportunity for members of the community to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. By the way, are you hearing this better? Because these microphones sound... Are these new microphones, Jordan? Or new something? Huh? Maybe you got us turned, turned up or something. Anyway, it's good.
We have a new soundboard.
Maybe I'm talking into the mic better.
The mic is closer to your mouth. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I just wanted to jump on the trash situation a little bit, and wondering when those new cans are coming from CalRecycle, and that maybe it could be a community kind of event, that we have this opportunity to get new trash cans, and also to beautify our streets, and just really take a look at the trash situation in town. Not just the public areas, but all these big trash cans that people now have that sit out on the sidewalk, because they don't fit in the old places they used to fit. So, just to maybe make a positive mindset, make that a big deal, that we're getting new trash cans downtown. And when are they coming?
Council directed the last meeting, I believe. They gave staff till October to make sure they were in place. End of October.
Yay. So, that's a really cool time to...
Because we put money in the budget to handle that.
Right. So, anyway, that was just an idea. And then, the other thing I noticed on the website today, that we are at 601 acre feet. And I was, so obviously, that was August 1st, so we're already below that. Are we communicating with Edison again to say, you know what, we really are in stage one officially, even though we never left it? Because I'm seeing people pressure wash with fresh water, and water usage needs to be brought to our foresight once again, to really think about what we're doing with water. So, I would hope you'd reach out to Edison, and maybe they'll start putting up more signage again, or making it just a little bit more relevant to what's going on.
Right. Good point.
Maybe we could invite Edison for the next, oh, let's invite Edison again to the next meeting, and maybe do another push, because we've had so many little heatwaves.
We actually have an item on the agenda, because I had asked that we have one on the first meeting of every month.
Yes, we also, you had also asked if they could come and address your...
Right. So, we'll get to talk about that soon.
Hi, Janice Hall, 334 Clarissa. I have a summer waterfront question, which is, I've been noticing trying to get my new boat into Jay's moorings, and also to the pier to drop people off and pick them up, and that it is like working in a river current when the express is in, the two express, the jet cats primarily. And I think that it's actually getting dangerous. It's almost impossible to pick up a mooring sometimes when it's combined with a little wind. And I've noticed that swimming in the corner, you know, where the little water polo thing is, is virtually impossible. And I have a feeling that has a connection to the boats. And I know we have said this, this has been years, and the red boats all, put it in reverse and had the engines running, you know, the cruises. But I think that they only had made two trips a day in those days, and they weren't jet engines. So, that, this has changed considerably. And I'd like the council to perhaps consider a review of Caleb's and Charlie Burschmidt's proposals of tying off to a stern mooring with a winch that secures the boats so they can turn them off. And I don't see why we have to wait two years to do this, or to wait for the Mole project to go through, because I think this would be a good place to start, and just to see what really happens when the boats are not running. I think Jay would probably appreciate it, and it just makes more sense. I think you could use the whole entire beach if this were an issue that could be resolved, because the end of South Beach is just not used. But it also does have kayaks and a bike rack on it. So, that's pretty expensive waterfront property for a bike rack also, I would say. So, thank you.
Yeah. So, I, the comment about the stern line, I mean, that is, I don't know, probably JJ and Bob discussed that. And I mean, is there, I know we don't have to respond, but if there is something that can be stated...
And if I could jump in, so the revised, or addendum to the sedimentation study has several proposals, some of which address the running of the engines and ways to stop it. And part of what's involved in that is redoing the floats so that they're all connected, which is somewhat of an expensive project. So, just because of the funds involved, we probably are gonna have to wait until we can use those grant funds from the Phase 2 Mole project to do it. But that is one of the fixes that's being proposed to the City Council, that I guess we're gonna be looking at at the next meeting.
Thank you. You hit the nail right on the head. It, you know, again, it's, it's something that's in the works. It's, it's gotta be planned out. You can't, you just can't go throw an anchor out and, and do it that way. So, again, it's, it's in the works. It's, there's several different ideas. This anchorage is one of them. The floats is part of that, that anchoring system. So, but...
Well, and I want to commend you, JJ and Orin, because they took the consultant out to look at the SpaceX, because they said, this is the kind of thing that we think would work. And the engineer said, oh, I see what you're saying, and that it, that is one of the proposals that's being considered.
And it's one that can probably be done sooner than later. It's just, we're not, we're not there with the funding and everything else in the grants, as, you know, we'll be going through. So, but it's there, it's on the list. It's always, it's always been there. It's just never been accessed.
Great. And as far as all the, you know, there is additional movement in the water. It's not just the express boats, but we also don't have the island navigation float in, so those bigger boats are closer in. I've noticed the difference in tying up my boat, which is right off of the navigation float, where island navigation is. And on some days, it's extremely difficult to line up and pick up the mooring appropriately. So, it's, you know, it's everybody's movement in the harbor.
Correct. And, you know, weather and surge has a lot to do with that, too. You know, I think 80, 95% of it is, is express boats, is the cruise ship tenders, you know, those big boats, when they're in reverse, they, they cause a current. And it's, you put that on top of the, the surge in the, and the boat traffic that's coming down by the pier, it affects it. If you just stand on the pier during the surge, you'll see the moorings move back and forth like this. And there's not a boat in. It's just, it's just the way it is. It's the surge coming down. So, but again, that, what she, what she requested is in, is in the plans, and we are looking at it. And it's just a matter of getting it funded.
Great. Thank you. Other comments from the community? Jim? No? Okay. All righty. Okay, consent calendar.
We only have two items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the July 17, 2018 City Council meeting. We have warrants for a total of $3,180,317.51. from the July 17th, 2018 city council meeting. We have warrants for a total of $3,180,317.51. And that's warrants to payroll periods and five electronic fund transfers.
Any comments? Staff, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve items one and two on consent.
Second.
Comments? Call for the vote.
I don't know. My voting is...
Oh, where did you go? Oh, sorry. Jeez.
Thank you.
All eyes.
And general business?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yes, the first item is a letter, letters regarding some proposed changes in state law. Two council members request that these letters be presented, so we're bringing this to you. One of the first changes that the Bureau of Cannabis Control is doing, and this is spurred on by the cannabis industry, is they would preempt local regulation in terms of delivery services such that if there is a license, if someone has a license to deliver a cannabis and the city allows it in one city, they can deliver in any city. So what the issue with that would be is what we're, our interpretation of it is, is that you wouldn't have just one delivery service, you'd have thousands.
And not able to regulate.
And not able to regulate it, yes. So that's the first letter. And then the second issue is the regulations, the proposed regulations specifically prohibit transportation of cannabis by aircraft, watercraft, drone, rail, human-powered vehicle, and unmanned vehicle. So for Avalon, that would really affect, you couldn't take it over on, on the express or the other boats. And you couldn't deliver cannabis on bicycles.
I have some questions because I went through the codes. And what my understanding of a distributor is, it's, we're talking about a chain of supply. And if you look at the language, a distributor is somebody who is taking possession from either a cultivator or a manufacturer and, or, and then usually from a cultivator and delivering the cannabis, raw cannabis, to a manufacturer. And then the other thing that a distributor does is he takes it from distributor or the raw manufacturer to the dispensaries. A distributor is not someone who delivers. And I think that there's some misunderstanding about that. Because clearly, I don't expect that anybody thinks they're going to put a bunch of manufactured stuff, a distributor, and bring it over here because there's no dispensary to deliver it to. In other words, they're required to deliver it to a dispensary or a manufacturer. And there's no manufacturer or dispensary here, so they wouldn't be able to do that. So I think that there, it's just that the objection was based on misunderstanding of what a distributor is. And then the other question I had, because both in the emergency regulations as well as the current regulations, and I'm surprised that we never even looked at this, it's clear that under the state regulations, the only person who can deliver is the employee of a licensed dispensary. So I don't even know on what basis we think that we can give out a permit to allow somebody to deliver if it's completely at odds with the language in the code. And what I would like to see is a carve-out for us that says that a delivery person here, provided I have purchased from a licensed dispensary, can go and pick it up for me and bring it back to me. Because I think that that's what we were envisioning that our delivery licensee would do.
You're a trip. The way you look into things, that's just incredible. Okay.
In a good way.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure how to take that.
No, it's like, whoa, okay.
All right. I'm just going to read it. "All deliveries of cannabis goods shall be performed by a delivery employee of a retailer."
Okay.
That is not what we're proposing to do with our licensee.
Okay. But the general, whoever would have the thing is, okay. Well, then, what's the definition of retail? Can you have retail but nobody can walk into?
No, there's a separate license under the state law for a retailer. That is a dispensary. Somebody who is a retailer is dispensing. And that is not what we are allowing someone to do here.
Okay, but we're allowing someone to be the dispenser and deliver. He's the dispenser and the deliver.
That was not my understanding. So what you're going, what you're saying is that they are going, you were expecting them to get a dispensary license from the state, but we are limiting their dispensing to taking it directly to the person at their home.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I'm in the middle of a pardon.
Is that how we understand it? Anybody in the audience?
Mm-hmm. That's how I understand it.
Yeah.
I didn't, I...
I don't, I don't know. I think the delivery service is a retail storefront. By definition, that is a dispensary. It's just not a storefront dispensary. So...
The fact that people can't walk into it, it still is a storefront, but...
But a delivery service is...
Is the store.
Is a dispensary. It's a retail non-storefront, according to the BCC language. It's a retail non-storefront. That's the license you'd apply for with the state to have a delivery service. And then, right...
And then we're allowing one entity...
This is the final regulation. It's the final proposed regulation, I think. There still might be a few changes to it. So...
Okay. So that means that a distributor would be bringing product to the island?
A distributor, yeah, has to bring it to the...
Right. Because you have to track it from the, from pulling it out of the ground to the sale to the final user. Everything gets weighed and tracked so that that's how they're hoping to make sure that there's...
I've already been in contact with licensed distributors. And these licensed distributors have already told me, even with that exact clause, that quote about aircraft, watercraft, drone, they've assured me that we're still serviceable according to the law.
We're still serviceable?
Yes. Because I, I, as a retailer, you have to deal directly with licensed distributors. Those distributors are responsible, just like Cap Beverage is responsible for delivering to your liquor store, delivering to your bar. They're, they, as a distributor, would be responsible. A distributor might have hundreds of brands underneath their distribution license.
Right.
And, yeah, but they're the ones responsible for bringing it.
What the council had decided when it drafted the ordinance was that we were not going to address how it gets here. We're going to just stay out of it and, and let the distributor get it here and we're not going to regulate that.
Well, then, part of our staff report is a member of the city council requested staff write letters to Catalina Express, Avalon Freight Service, Flying Boats, and United States Postal Service to confirm that those agencies would allow transport of medical cannabis to facilitate delivery on the island. And we pulled together a, a group in 2016. We had a meeting and on August 10th of 2016, and we got word directly from the Coast Guard that the Coast Guard will continue to take law enforcement action against those in possession of marijuana despite any state laws permitting possession and/or use of the substance. The possession or use of marijuana remains a federal offense under the Controlled Substances Act regardless of its location or intended use. In all cases, U.S. Coast Guard law enforcement officers will continue to enforce federal law even where state legalized a controlled substance. So from the ferry operators, they're all in agreement that they're under the Coast Guard law and they're not going to permit the transportation of marijuana on their vessels. And the same goes true for Avalon Freight.
Hence my suggestion that we do a carve-out, that we request the state to do a carve-out and you find a private boat or some other means of getting it here.
I'm speaking specifically, and I'd like to finish. I'm speaking specifically to the item on the agenda, which was asking us to reach out and write letters to the express. And so I just went ahead of writing letters. And we also received notification at the same time from the U.S. Postal Service, of which I went back to find out if that was still the case. And no, you can't. The postal service will not, because they're federally regulated, will not allow the transportation. And then, again, with the, I did not get back in contact with Island Express, but through colleagues of transportation had said that Island Express is still under the same, the thought. So that, that would be addressing the request of the staff report that we have here. But if the idea or if the request is to do something different, which is reach out to someone and carve out a way for the distributor to get over here, that's different than what the staff reports.
That's not really how the Brown Act works. I mean, I think that I'm entitled to suggest that, no, in terms of cannabis and delivery on the island and the new regulations, I think that having gone ahead and written letters that none of us got to see may not be the way to proceed with this, particularly since others have different opinions about how to proceed with this. My sense is that since the state of California, the people of California approved Prop 64, that it's not up to the city to say, we're, we're going to stand in the way of people who live here being able to procure cannabis when the state has said that it's legal here. And I don't think it's our business to tell, to write a letter saying that we aren't going to allow it.
Well, I didn't actually write any letters that the council didn't see, so that's a misstatement. But what I did do is print. I have a...
Well, it said that there are letters that have been written. That was in the staff report.
"A member of the city council requested staff write letters." I don't know who did that.
Oh.
That's what I'm asking. I don't know who did that. I printed documents.
I was specifically asked if we need, if we weren't going to send letters that were council direction or whatever, whether we needed to bring it to the city council. I said, yes. The council, the city's going to take an action, which is why these items are here.
And, and what I did was print all my documents from August 5th of 2016, August 10th of 2016, and August 7th, I'm sorry, that's today, June 22nd of 2016, which a whole group of us, including Jim Lutejahn, Tim Bombard, Doug Federal, Brian Bray as the harbor master, Greg Bombard, Annie Marshall, Scott Campbell was on the phone with us. I mean, it was a, you know, it was a group that was put together to talk about delivery.
So I misread this. Really what this means is a member of the city council asked that this amount, this item be put on the agenda to consider whether staff should be directed.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And so I thought, oh, my God, have we already written a letter when we haven't even talked about it?
I, I guess what I'm concerned about is the fact that we're, we, members of the council have said, we don't want to be involved in the delivery part of it. We don't, we don't, we're basically saying, we want to turn a blind eye. We don't care how it gets here. If it's here, it services a community. But then in this, it's saying, we're asking to write letters, you know, to, as to whether or not they would do that. So it just is contradictory that we've said one thing all along and now we're coming back saying, do we want to write letters?
Who was this? Who is the member of the city council?
We were not asking...
Oh, it was Oli. Okay. Well, Oli, I'd like to hear from you, since this is your item.
Part of it is. I don't want to put our cross-channel in jeopardy. I'm getting blocked. And if we have a letter from those guys that says they're not going to allow it, not going to allow it, not to allow it, I think the reasonable question is, how's it going to get here? In my mind.
Well, we know they're not, we know they're not going to, they'd all write back and say, no, it's against law. And then that's it. So I don't think that's, I don't think it's necessary to write, write a letter to, for them to all to say, and we, we don't like that. I think the jump, I think that blind eye is good, but I also think in the interim, it's following up with what you say.
But there's definitely a problem if, if the state regulation is going to say you can't transport by any kind of means that would allow somebody to get it here. I mean, it's either watercraft or aircraft.
Right. I know.
One or the other.
But then, if you're a distributor over town and you would just take possession of whatever or however much product you're allowed to take possession of and put it in your car and you just take it to the retailer, right?
Correct. A truck or whatever.
Right. So you could hire a boat, a personal boat, to bring it over?
It's against the law.
But under these regulations, under these regulations is written, you couldn't do that.
Yeah.
It would be a violation of the state regulations.
Okay.
Correct.
State, right.
You guys, you need to understand the boundaries. There's state waters and federal waters. So Coast Guard upholds the law on federal waters. They continue to uphold the law on state waters. Your scenario of driving from Alhambra to Upland to give the marijuana is, you're not crossing any federal roads.
It doesn't matter. Actually, the federal law applies to anybody...
It supersedes it. But what I'm saying is that with the Coast Guard involved, they, you got a water ahead of you. So they're...
A DEA agent could arrest you on land.
Very much so. You, you, you're correct. But what I'm saying is that the cross-channel carriers are really going to be real careful on this one because it just, it's so new and there is federal laws involved here. So there is...
So when I go to my dispensary in Long Beach and I buy my weed and I bring it back in my purse, the cross-channel carriers are going to search me? They're going to tell me that I can't board?
Well, they can do a random search with a drug dog. And if they find it on you, yeah. Yeah. You, you would be, depending on how much you had, you would be arrested or cited or however. They have that opportunity to do that. So that's the Coast Guard side of it with, when you're dealing with the federal waters. I just want to throw that out.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah. No, you're right.
So the carve-out, that's interesting. I mean, that, I think we ought to look into that because we are the only island, folks, right, in the state of California that has to deal with this.
Right.
So, so we are special once again. So...
No, but it's been done in a number of instances where they recognize that our situation's different.
Yeah, so...
I mean, and I think that, you know, the, the, the bigger question that you raise is to what extent do we curtail, curtail people's states' rights because we have a repressive federal government that has threatened to do something but so far as I know has not? And I think that part of the deal was that they told at least Colorado governor that they were going to back off of states that had gone through the process of having their citizens approve it.
Right.
I know. I, I just feel it'd be one thing if the Coast Guard was out there left and right, where the DEA had dogs out at the cross-channel carriers.
I love those. A lot of the boats.
I have yet to hear of arrests being made under federal law for possession of marijuana. I mean, I'll defer, but...
I don't know, Captain, Captain Hawking?
Well, okay, then that's, okay, so it doesn't sound like there's, well, I don't know. I, I don't think we need to write a letter. However, when it comes, okay, to the whole thing about writing about the, allowing all delivery systems to come into Avalon, anybody who they want. We're trying to regulate it and we were being very conservative, I think, in what we've proved so far, just because of the community. And so I, I don't mind writing a letter to kind of oppose everybody being able to be a delivery system. Because I think that kind of, but I don't know what y'all were thinking.
And I would just tell you that the league is, they're against this particular one. Their, their whole mantra is, this is, whether you're for or against, it's state intrusion and local control. And, and so the league is pushing against this, this particular one. I don't think they're, they're, looking at the other one, they're really about, you know, the preemption of local ordinances on delivery.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to play devil's advocate, but because I can see the idea that it would be preemption of local government to say, everybody has to allow dispensaries. It's a land use. You have something set up. You have somebody dealing in a, something that you maybe don't want in your neighborhood. But to the extent that you have a state law that says every citizen has the right to have this, it's the same as if, if you said, well, we don't think people should have milk in, in, you know, in Lakewood. And so we're, Lakewood's not going to let anybody deliver milk to, to people in Lakewood. It's a legal substance.
Well, okay. What the state law did was it provided that each individual city can determine whether you're going to have pot for recreational use or pot...
Dispensaries.
Dispensaries. You can, and, and so what they have allowed is cities can determine whether you have a dispensary or not, which is a delivery. And some cities have said, no, we're not going to do that. And we're not going to allow that at all. Avalon has determined that you'll have one. And the concern of the league is, is that when you decide that you're going to have a single dispensary, that this law would say that you can't limit it to one. If you're going to have a dispensary, if you're going to allow it, you can, anyone can deliver it. Period.
No, no, no. What it means is, I live in Signal Hill, and I call my favorite weed shop in Long Beach, and then one of their employees, I pay extra to have their employee deliver it to my house in Signal Hill. And what you're saying is, Signal Hill should be able to say that because you're a resident of Signal Hill, you cannot get a delivery of a legal substance.
No. What is, what the intent of the state law and the cannabis people is, is that if you have a state license for delivery, that you can deliver to any city regardless of what that local city says. If they allow, if you allow distribution or delivery by one person, you don't have to just go through that one person. Any person can deliver it.
Right.
And so that's just a matter of, again, it's the attack on, it's, the league is saying this is a tax local control, because you don't have to be an employee of license and ten and the in Avalon.
But you have to be a licensed employee. You have to be state licensed.
Yes.
The dispensary that's delivering, who has the employee that's going to deliver to me in Signal Hill is licensed. They're regulated.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know. It just sounds to me like it's an infringement on rights that were already voted on, and surefire way for attorneys to get some litigation going. And, you know, and the practicalities of it are, is somebody really going to call up Long Beach and say, "I'll pay you $80 to bring me something from a dispensary in Long Beach?" No.
Well, okay, okay. So we're just allowing medical. So I could go on Weed Maps, though, and call Long Beach, because I'm over 18 or 21, and it wouldn't just be medical I was getting. I could buy recreational from them as well. Right? And so I think that's also the, we're trying to, seem like we're trying to at least manage a little bit until maybe views change. But-
Sounds to me like all you're doing is driving people underground, that you have a system where we're finally going to say, "We're going to do this regulated. There are going to be rules. There are going to be people who are licensed to do it." And by saying, "We don't want to participate in that system. We don't believe in that system," you're driving people underground.
I think you're oversimplifying, because it's not, we are going to approve or disapprove the medical dispensary or medical distributor in Avalon, so we can make distrib, make deliveries. But the distributors can be anybody. If they, if somebody gets a distributor's license, he can distribute anywhere in the state, except that's how I read it.
But they can only distribute to a licensed dispensary.
Yeah.
Or a manufacturer. We don't have a licensed distributor, licensed dispensary.
Not licensed lab.
We're getting distributor versus retailer mixed up.
Right.
This particular one is a retailer. So would be, what, again, this is from what the state and the league tells us, is that, and what many cities are fighting, is that if you choose to only have one distributor, or no, one dispensary in Avalon, this, if this passes, you'll have more than one. And you'll lose the ability, I mean, to just limit it to one.
It would be a delivery service that was coming from the mainland, basically.
Oh, yes.
Right. Any comments from the community on this one?
You've got a question?
You have come. You have a question?
I don't have any.
Well, okay. So, you know, there's two of you vying for this dispensary business, or this delivery service. So do you see this as having an impact on what either you, of your business, your business plan?
So the way I understand it is, yes, anyone from over town that's licensed would be able to deliver here, but I think you would still be able to limit one city license, right?
No.
Here, within the city.
Nope.
They would still be able to deliver here. I just don't think it's feasible for them to deliver from over there. You call over there, like, and say, and just have them come over here when they're over there. But if, I didn't think that if you guys pass-
And I think there are market forces, why people are not going to buy-
And this retailer was licensed out of this local jurisdiction, I don't think anybody else would be coming over from over town.
But you're saying, but if there was a few people that could find rental space and go to the state and get their license, we would have no choice but to allow them to do business?
They still need their physical location or their frickin'-
Right, but if, but-
In their licensed city.
Oh, no.
If they're licensed in Long Beach, their brick-and-mortar location still has to be in Long Beach.
Exactly.
And they won't be able to have half their inventory sitting over here unless they're doing something illegal.
No. So if I had a piece of property I rented or rent to somebody to do what you're proposing to do, I could do that?
They would have to get your city license first, before they can go get a state license.
Okay. But they'd be able to get the state license. That wouldn't be a problem. But again-
They would already have a state license.
Right. So we would be, but we would have to allow them in?
The concern is, is what, what the marijuana attorneys that have looked at this is, is that if you are licensed in Long Beach-
Right.
And you have a brick-and-mortar business building in Long Beach, that you could, assuming that you're not going to get arrested crossing over, that you could deliver here.
Right.
Even though, even if you don't have a physical location here.
And they wouldn't have-
But you, then, still, we're ignoring the fact that you'd have to get it here, and that's-
Okay. But so they wouldn't be required to get a business, and you're saying, probably wouldn't be a big deal, because people aren't going to bother if they don't?
I don't think people are going to be coming this way to spend that 80 bucks or whatever for their round-trip ticket to make a delivery. There was a, there was somebody on Weed Maps that was based out of Harbor City that was trying to do the same thing, like, six months ago. They were calling, and they were only making deliveries twice a week. They'd take orders all week long, and I have people that told me they would call, that the person would say, "Oh, well, we haven't met our quota today, so we won't be delivering to you." Because they have a certain amount they have to do before-
I have a funny story. I actually took, he also did, he was a Lyft driver, and he had a funny logo on the back of his shirt, and it was that guy.
It was.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I just think it's been tried already, and I don't think it's really feasible to be concerned about that. And if you guys still limit it to the one, or two, or whatever you guys end up setting up, I think you're still going to only have that one brick-and-mortar here operating, because anyone else that comes in and rents a house from you is still going to have to have a city license before they go and get that state license. All those temporary state licenses are done. You have to go with a city license before you can get your state license.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So then, okay, number one, then, is, is there a consensus on writing a letter to all of the cross-channel carriers and all those people? Just kind of a show of hands?
Well, what are, what are we asking them?
Well, that was just a-
Do you know there's a federal law that if you transport, knowingly transport, I guess? Is it a strict liability if somebody's a passenger and has a bag with them that contains it? Are they liable? Are they subject to fines?
No.
I can't imagine that they are.
I hate-
No.
It's not their fault.
Doesn't matter.
They're still, they're still transporting it, though.
But how do they know? I mean, there's, there's-
No, we're talking about federal law that is a criminal statute.
There's drugs going back and forth on that boat all the time.
Criminal statute requires-
I don't think.
Intent.
I don't think that the, the carriers themselves would be liable. This goes with the manner in which someone is, is transporting it.
Right. Okay. So I, I would be in favor of writing, writing a letter to all the cross-channel carriers, the Island Express, flying boats, United States Postal Service, and Island Express, if I didn't already name them, helicopters, asking them to, whether or not they would allow transportation of medical cannabis to facilitate the delivery on the island, and if not, to give an explanation of their position. I mean, because obviously everybody's sticking with the same story, that they are not allowed to transport. So I think if we want to get something officially in writing, we should, we should ask for it.
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley. But the problem is this dichotomy that we have, this crazy situation that the federal law does not allow them to do it, and state law does. So, I mean, in my opinion, you're putting them in a more difficult position by calling them out, because they absolutely can't. They can't break federal law by crossing the water, and they can't break federal law by flying it, transporting it into federal waters, or, and the post office absolutely cannot. So to me, the best thing is, is to let sleeping dogs lie, and just do what you want to do as city, and wait to see, because you're not going to be the only ones that are dealing with this issue. I mean, we are always unique in that to get the plant or the medicine from there to here is going to be an issue. And so, I mean, it, to me, it's just, the whole state is, is having the same, same problem. Just to transport it anywhere is going to be an issue. If, if you want to take it and put federal law into the mix, that's the problem nationwide. But, you know, like, to me, it's a wave, and it's going to change. And I don't know when it's going to be, but when we've got John Boehner investing in pot, when we've got one of the Wrigley descendants investing in pot, I mean, it's going to change, you guys. It's going to go that way. But right now, I think if you put, if you put people, if you put those people on the spot to contradict federal law, they're not going to do it.
They're not. That's my point. That's what I'm saying. They're just going to say they're not going to do it.
So just let it lie, and, you know, let people do what they're doing, and then we'll see what happens. But it's, if you ask them, they don't want to assume the liability. If you choose a delivery service and you give them the license to do it, that's the person that's going to be liable.
No. And I guess what she's saying, yeah, they'll write a letter back, and they'll just say, "No, it's against federal law," and that's it. We don't, that's what it will say.
Waste of time.
Do we need to have that?
I mean, it's nothing different than the letters they've already written us.
So I don't think we, that's why I don't think-
They've already written us, and they've already told us no.
That's why I don't think we need to write a letter at all.
I don't think we need to pursue that part of it anymore.
I don't think we need to write them a letter. But you just said you did. So-
No, I'm saying, if the idea is to write them a letter, then fine. We could do that.
We know what they're going to say.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's move on that. Do you want them to, do we want us to write them a letter or not?
No.
No.
Not, not to the cross-channel carriers.
Okay. Now let's go to the other, to the other issue, which is the letter, like the league-
This would be a letter opposing the expansion of who can deliver marijuana to, what retailers can deliver marijuana.
I'd vote no on that.
Don't write the letter. Just let the league do their thing?
Yeah. I think in terms of local control, the issue is not that significant, that really, what, on my commission, there's a guy who's a city council member in, oh, God, some, I'm not going to think of what town it is, but they voted they didn't want anything in their town. And he's, to me, represents sort of old school. You know, "It's a bad drug. We don't want it. We're not going to have it," and kind of ignoring, as Paula pointed out, that people's views are changing. We have a state law now that says that it's, recreational is allowed. And just like with prohibition, you're going to have people who, you know, push back and say, "No, we're not going with it," and eventually we will get through this period.
But we're not taking, talking recreational. We're just talking medical.
But really, for all intents and purposes, it's the same under the law now. I know what you're saying for dispensing purposes here. And, you know, that was as far as people felt comfortable with going, and I get that. But you're still not going to be able to say to me that I can't go to Long Beach and purchase something and bring it back here. That's taken out of the local control's hands now. It's state law.
That's true. I have no problem with that.
Yeah. So I guess the, is the-
I think the difficulty is, if we're really serious that we're going to give a license to somebody to dispense medical, that they have to somehow get it here. And if the state law says you can't do it by aircraft or watercraft, we have a problem in that the letter should say, "Hey, you forgot about us. We're an island." And we need some sort of specific language, restrictive language.
Maybe by tunnel.
By tunnel. A long plastic straw.
Ooh, yeah, ooh.
Well, I don't, I, I mean, do we even need to write a letter? Or is one of, is our councils, anybody on the council asking us to write a letter, or is this coming from staff to write a letter to oppose the change?
Ollie, Ollie brought it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Ollie brought it up. He mentioned it to me, and under, on first face value, it seemed like that might be something we want to do, so that we don't mess up, and we don't end up with, if it was really going to impact what we're trying to do locally, I, I wasn't interested in that.
But, Ollie, if, if the, if you still have to have a city license in order to dispense medical cannabis here, and we are only allowing one, then it would, then would this really matter for us?
Well, the way it's written, if we don't get Pam's cut out, yes. This was ever doing is breaking, breaking the state law.
Right. So can we write the letter with a cut out?
I would vote for that.
Okay.
And it's broadly, on the, on the Brown Act issue, it's, when you look at the recommended action and how it's been noticed, it just says, "Write a letter regarding the proposed changes." So what you would do is you would ask for a specific carve-out, but I, but you got to tell me exactly what you're asking for.
Could we come back with a sample letter for approval at the next meeting, then?
I think it's to use modes of transportation to the island, that-
Right.
The prohibition on aircraft and watercraft would not apply to Catalina Island.
To an island within 10, 30 miles offshore of the population between-
Right. I mean, I don't know why they never could just call us out.
The ways defined in the vehicle code that you wrote weeks ago.
Exactly. Which is such an archaic way. I don't know why we can't just call out Catalina.
They can't, they can't pass laws for one locale.
And you need to make it a little emotional, too, because, because, I mean, we are restricting it to medical, because, so we're, I think we're trying to be cautious. However, it's, there needs to be a little bit of the violin in there.
I understand. The only way to get it, unlike any other city, the only way to get it here is, so, the state law needs to have a carve-out for if there's only, for instance, the only other island that I can offhand think of is Balboa Island, and you got the highway that goes over there. So-
Right, right.
Coronado Island has the highway, too.
Coronado Island.
Well, I know what's not, but it's called, okay, it's a long peninsula.
Well, any of the channel islands that are inhabited, but-
Yeah. Okay. So what we will do is, we will craft a letter and bring it back to the next, unless you don't want to, we can just send it.
Staff will take a first stab at it, though.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and, and then who do we send it to? Everybody, the governor on down?
The state has their whole office of whatever. And I would, I'm, I would be happy to contact LA County to solicit their support, because I think they would support-
I really think you need to copy your assembly person and senator.
And governor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Give it to him.
Or contact them beforehand.
Okay.
Just a thought, that the state of Washington has many islands, and it's legal up there, so it might be worthwhile to just look how they maneuver it, because the state ferries, I believe, go into federal water before they get back into state water around all those islands. So it's possible that, you know, there's already some-
Right, good, I get it.
Verbiage out there that might apply to Catalina.
That's probably just a phone call.
If those islands are 38, because, if they're, how far they're off, because it's three miles.
You know, and it really doesn't matter. Federal, federal law covers all of us.
Right.
It can be enforced anywhere. It's not just a question of federal waters. So although there are federal agencies that overlap over boats and-
We will not bring the, we will not bring the letter back for council approval. We'll just draft the letter and send it. Or do you want it to-
No, I think I should come back.
Okay. We'll bring it back at the next meeting.
And, but that was quite a lively conversation that you didn't expect, I'm sure, Ollie.
Oh, fine.
No, I know. It was good. Okay, item number four. Oh, wow. This is the city council ad hoc committee updating-
Yes, it is. Sorry.
Okay. I think I'll just do a short report, if that's okay, Ollie. So with regard, this is regard to Edison and the water rate increase and related tariff and advice letter matters. So first, I'd like to report that the city did receive a update to the water usage. The report that we get, we were getting monthly, and it kind of dropped off a bit, and that's posted on the city website. I think you'll see there's a- I think you'll see there's a little bit of, um, conservation fatigue happening, people are starting to use water increasingly, um, and it's been very warm. So, those two things together make it difficult. We also do receive a D cell production report, and I've asked staff if we could start putting that on the website, so that people can look at that. What's not included that, in that is, so it's a report of what they're producing out of D cell plant one and two. They don't run them at the same time, they run one or the either, but it does tell you how much they produced out of each of those over the month, what the demand was. You can backtrack and see that, you know, absent some evaporation losses, how much demand is being put on the reservoir, because the D cell's not enough to cover everything. And it tells you also the maximum produced in any one day, and the average demand. So, that's a good report, if you're interested in water, to look at, at both of those reports. With regard to the advice letter, Edison met with our, with the group that we're loosely calling the California Water Group. When was that, maybe three weeks ago, four weeks ago? And in the interim, has now revised what they're willing to propose, which would essentially break their advice letters into two parts. One would be to do the increases that they could have already done, but didn't. Um, and then the other, to look at the increases related to expenditures of capital. So, one is sort of the, the lost revenue thing. So, um, that's going to be brought back to the larger group, and at that time, I think we're also going to have to talk about process, like, does everybody get a vote, and how do we come back to the city council and make sure that we have authorization to, to represent the city in, in those regards, but I don't think we're quite there yet.
And the increases that were already approved, what was that total, do you remember?
Um, it's, I want to say 4 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Basically, to get back to the rate that they should have had.
Yeah, if you pull, you're right, if you pull up the, um, the presentation that I did, the written presentation, it had those numbers in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It was like an interim number, and then it jumped to a bigger number. So, this one is something I think that we, we all owe, and there's a general sense that wouldn't it make sense to start paying it, instead of letting it grow and grow and grow?
Right.
Um, and then I just had something, oh, and then finally, I'm still getting, uh, no response from the request to have the projection of when we'll hit stage two and three. I'm pushing, um, I've indicated to them that nobody is going to hold them to it, we understand it's a forecast, not a crystal ball, um, but I think it's important that everybody be able to follow along and see, you know, if you originally said you thought it was going to be October, and now it's June or May, maybe we want to start talking about taking other steps, particularly because the grant news keeps getting put off, those projects are further and further in the distance, and there's a good likelihood that we are going to come up against a stage two or three again. So.
If we run both the plans at the same time, we're just fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Anything you want to add to that, Ole?
Well, we did, basically, with the first advice letter, is going to catch up and decouple, so that the price of their water will change, they can change it yearly based upon the sales, so they get the proper rate of return, or team the proper rate of return. And that's one of the things that happened last time, is that we didn't have the decoupling, and so it took so long to get it put in place, and all of a sudden, we owned a lot of money. And then it's just, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for that report.
Yes.
Item number five. Plastic straws. Plastic straws.
At the last city council meeting, you directed staff to come back with this draft ordinance for you to consider, and we were going to get some additional input, I believe, from Cindy and Pam, so we just went by things that had been mentioned at the meeting, tried to, yeah, put those in, and I know you have both been extremely busy also, so, but I didn't want to hold it off, because I, I felt that the importance was stressed, so.
And, and let me add one additional thing, there was some discussion at the last meeting about, um, this, the current ordinance has four exemptions from all the regulations, and I just want to go over those with you, to make certain, if you want to have those exemptions eliminated, or, you know, just put this. So, the first one is food prepared outside the city and not prepackaged, and, and not repackaged in the city. In other words, from wherever it is, if it's, if it's packed, ready to sell, and it comes to the city, and it's not repackaged here, that is exempt from these ordinances. Do you want to maintain that?
Yeah.
Right, because that's basically like the foster farms' chicken that comes over, already prepackaged, and goes to Vons. I don't, we, we really don't have that control.
So, all right, then the second exemption is food provided by Long Beach Unified to the kids.
Why don't we ask them no?
I don't, I don't think legally, given the structure of the schools to local cities, I think that that's part of what I, I wanted to see whether we could get a program going, a voluntary thing, as opposed to-
So, for now, we can always add them later.
So, I think for now, we, we need to-
We'll leave that, we'll leave that one in there, okay. Coolers and ice chest made of polystyrene intended for reuse.
I think we should forget that exemption.
We should, we should not, not have that exemption.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Because that's what we're talking about with coolers. Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, the last one is food brought by individuals for their personal consumption on city land, um, where it's not part of an event. In other words, if someone from over town has something, and they're having a picnic, we, we're exempting that.
Yeah.
I think you have to.
All right, so, in other words, what we'll-
So, I seem to recall, though, that there was language that exempted Vons from, because we only applied it to people who are selling prepared foods. Did we exempt Vons from that?
I couldn't find that in the ordinance that I was looking at.
What, I, I think we're trying to wrap that up into it, that we don't want Vons to package their food with polystyrene, and then we also don't want them to sell it. So, the plates-
Right. But, yeah, and for some reason, I thought that was in the original ordinance, but the city attorney seems to-
Yeah, I, I couldn't find that, and it may be in, under the definition of food provider, so let me just look at it here. Food provider includes a grocery store.
Okay. But then we still would need to lead, or add language so that they don't sell it on the shelf.
Right. Or any retailer, for that matter.
Yeah. And then the other, other thing is packing materials. There's a provision in the Malibu ordinance that I thought was a good one, that, you know, obviously, packages coming here, you can't do anything about, but-
Right.
What page, Pam? On there?
What's that?
What page was that one on?
Um, it's not on, um-
Packing material means material used to hold, cushion, or protect items packed in a container for shipping, transport, and storage?
Oh, in the Malibu one, yeah.
Page two of seven?
Yeah.
And that probably goes to, like, UPS stores and whatnot, that they sell the peanuts and whatnot.
And I don't know how much of that is sold here, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if those-
I give it away to try to get it off the island, so, I mean-
I don't know if that stuff is-
Take it someplace else and dispose of it.
They have the biodegradable peanuts, you know?
They do have those now. But, but I believe that's where it came from, in the Malibu one.
Right, because they weren't the biodegradable one.
Right.
Does that mean somebody would come to my garage and steal all my ice chests?
No, I mean-
It, it's really meant to be, you know, you, having a retailer now that's selling 150 polystyrene things that are used for four days, and then they're just going to go in the trash and go out to the landfill. That's what we're trying to, I think, those that have them will use them until they die, and then, you know, it's not, you're not looking at it as a single use, whereas a visitor coming over is, it's meeting its needs very inexpensively to have that, and unfortunately, it's very expensive to our community. And then I do want to apologize to city staff, because I did specifically say that I would do a bunch of research on this, because I had a list of items I wanted to include. One of those was the Mylar balloons, and I, I understand that it's a very difficult, it's going to be difficult for us to ban Mylar balloons, also because people are bringing them over from the mainland as well, so it's not as if they're, you know, being manufactured here or whatnot. So, um, I don't, also want to be the first city who does the Mylar balloon ban. And then the second item was balloons in general, specifically these little water balloons that we see thousands of them broken up, that wash up on the beaches, and, so I had wanted to look at putting balloons in general, but again, you're talking about, they're just going to come from the mainland, so if we ban the sale of balloons, there's a lot of responsible people who use balloons for birthday parties and whatnot. It was really, I was looking at it in terms of the water fight balloons and all of that.
The balloon border patrol.
The what?
The balloon border patrol.
Yeah. And then, um, one of my other concerns, and after great deliberation and, and discussion, was how do we reduce the amount of plastic bottles in our community, uh, plastic water bottles? And I just struggle with that on a daily basis, because we're unfortunately regulated by a health department that doesn't necessarily allow us to put, you know, to make water available that is not sealed up, and, you know, we have water stations that have been putting town, we have encouraging people to use, um, you know, Brita's and, and other options in town, but I just couldn't come up with a way to add any language in here about plastic bottles. I just don't know how we could even do that, so.
I just think that's a whole education, when we start talking education, and really working on the kids, and-
Agreed.
You know, and, and maybe there's some little grant for some, like, the, the, all of those containers that people fill up with water, like, you used, you know, maybe there's something we could do to, to kind of-
But there's also, you know, the picnic that a family's going to, and they go down and buy a case of water for everybody. I, I mean, I was just, in my mind, I'm thinking, how do we do better than we are now? And I had wanted to try to put something in there, but it just, it, it just, I just don't know how.
We have boxed water now.
Have you seen, have you seen the boxed water?
Yeah.
Yes. And I've tried to purchase it, it's extremely expensive.
Is it?
Extremely expensive, because you're paying shipping, you're paying to, you're paying for weight to ship the boxes of water.
Oh, I mean, you, the same would apply to plastic. I mean, there's not a, a significant weight difference, I can't imagine.
No, but let's say that I bought five cases of boxed water, I'm paying for, you know, I'm paying for the, the shipping on that. I think that where you get the cost effectiveness is if you're doing pallets of it. So, it's something that, you know, Catalina Beverage could, or Vons could look at, is bringing in, um, but I think it's a great idea to do the boxed water. I looked at it personally and thought it was extremely expensive.
The only thing that I think we would have authority to regulate is the sale within town. But I just have to say, it really worries me to have all those plastic bottles on the barge in the sun. It's not just the environmental impacts to the land, it's to people drinking that water. Um, and I'm just curious as to whether there, you know, how much, if you're buying in bulk, what, the difference would be. I think we put that on a, let's work on it project?
Yeah, no, agreed. I had wanted to just say that at the last meeting, I did say I would do, I would add my items in, and I did not do that to staff, so I at least wanted to make that right, and have done that before we got here tonight. Those were the items I wanted to have added.
And so love that you guys are doing this. The thing that's hard here is there's no choice. Like, I, to me, you know, I, I, you can have both, you can have boxed water, and you can have plastic bottled water. And at least you can give people a choice, just saying this out there to Vons and whoever else sells water. I mean, if you give people a choice, I mean, frankly, I've been to stores where they literally charge more for the plastic than they do for the bottled water, just to make people, encourage them to buy the, the bottled, or the boxed water. But I just, we have no choice here, so when people go in and they want to buy water, there's only plastic bottles of water. And, um, I just, I've talked to the manager at Vons, could you please bring it in? But, you know, if you guys bear pressure on them to say, just try it, see what would happen if you gave people a choice.
That's it, good point.
I like that.
Yeah.
Have we talked about the dispensing machines for water that are, to, to promote them? Maybe Vons should have one outside. Um, and, you know, the Rotary already has done a great job, but I don't know if they're all ser, in service. I, I think a couple of them are.
Rotary has three in service, and is currently applying, may have already received the funding to do a fourth station, um, so that there is, you know, some supply for, like, the beach areas, Joe Machado Field and whatnot, but it's, you know, it also needs to get tied into city, or needs to get tied into the water, so that's Public Works, which is, I don't think is an issue at all, but it's a matter of just putting it on the docket to do it, and then also Rotary only has so much money and grant money to do it, so it would be-
Right. It'd be nice if one were outside the Vons.
Yeah. And, you know, it is amazing, I don't know how those people do it over town, they have water stores, where people go in and take their-
And containers.
And how do, I don't know how they make money, because they're charging 50 cents or whatever they charge for a gallon of water, and I just don't know how, I don't know how they do it, but hallelujah, they do it. So, maybe that could be a comment, but I don't know if we could ask Amanda-
It was done all over Europe.
I know, and it is amazing that they, that, and they have some now that has electrolytes in it, and so, um, yeah. I don't know, is that something that we could ask Amanda to chat with them about, if that, if we felt in, or could, is that something?
I was actually going to address the Mylar idea again, because there, it is for sale at the toy store. Leos know, and I have seen balloons come over on the express, and perhaps there would be a local way of saying, you know, could we rethink this? You know, could the express not take them, bring them? Um, the, I understand there's the litigious aspect, but I also understand that California is on fire, and these balloons get in the power lines, and they're explosive.
Right.
And what then? So, you're going from, okay, do we worry about lawsuits, or do we worry about a fire?
Right.
So, you know.
We probably could have a, a little discussion with Leslie, for start, at the toy store, to get her opinion.
She recycles.
People bring them back, and?
Yeah, and she's got a science, except recycle balloons.
Oh, that's nice, but then maybe, so what do you think? What do you want to do, council?
Well, I know that it's on the September cog to see if, gateway, to see if other cities are, you know, considering a ban.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think it's like the shopping bag thing, that it's, when it's, there's going to have to be some momentum, um, to have it happen. So, let's see what they say, and then-
Okay. We'll hold off on the Mylar for today.
Yeah.
So, with respect to-
Cindy's been kind enough to get that on the agenda for today.
This ordinance, we can, I'll look through it again to make sure, when we clean up any of the Vons exemption language, we'll eliminate that one exemption, um, we'll bring it back for the first reading at the next council meeting. I did want to specifically call the council's attention to section six of the ordinance. I made this effective immediately, upon adoption, but there'll be a six-month delay in the actual enforcement efforts, um, to give, uh, people a rolling start to get rid of their current stock. Is that acceptable, or do we want to make it effective immediately?
Is that what we did last time?
Um, actually, last time, I think it was a year.
Oh, wow.
So, I'm, and, so I'm, I just made it six months.
No, I think we've been talking about this, people have noticed.
Well, but six months seems like a long time.
I would just say January 1st. It goes into effect January 1st.
And then we'll follow up, because-
We can do that.
I like that.
Because they've been trying to get rid of, how they say, they're trying to get rid of the star, less people.
I agree, we've been talking about this for a while.
Got it. Okay. I just, I was, that's why I was calling it to your time.
And it's actually less expensive for wooden coffee stirs than it is for plastic anyway, so.
And with all due respect, there's that one big issue still that these multi-use plastic bags, they're handing out like candy at Vons for 10 cents apiece that people are willing to pay. And I don't understand why they can't have paper bags. I don't get it. But you have to ask, and they're going to grab the plastic and people, I never see anybody take the paper bag, ever, unless you ask. I mean, of course, everybody should be taking their own bags, but they, that, those are now, it's just, they're in the landfill as much as the silly single use. So I don't know how you can...
So it seems obvious to me that Vons has missed the mark in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. So do we just then reach out to Vons and, I mean, do we have the ability to just reach out to them and say, you know, hey, you're missing, you're missing the point here? The point is, is that we're trying to reduce the amount of plastic in our landfill.
I think during Amanda's discussion with Vons on the conditions, you know, compliance with the conditions of approval, we can just, as part of that conversation, since we're having conversations with Vons anyway, we can raise it.
And then at some point, do we come back and say that restaurateurs cannot deliver their food in plastic bags? They're to-go.
Probably should.
Yeah.
I mean, because most, you know, there's quite a few, I don't want to say most or half or whatnot, but there are quite a few restaurants that still use plastic bags that are for their to-go food.
I can fix that in this ordinance if you want to.
I mean, can we add that into this ordinance? That plastic bags go away?
Yeah. That's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, Paula had that example from up north of a incentive program as opposed to, you know, the charge of a dime. That, I don't know if, you know, all the service groups somehow to, it's not a huge expenditure to make that happen. Where if you bring your own bag, you get a coin to put in for each, you know, service group in town. And then the service group gets the money. Seems like a great idea as a way of incentivizing people.
Trader Joe's just gave a little ticket and they put it in the thing that a drawing every once in a while and you would win something. And maybe that's even easier to do.
Two buck chuck.
Two nine nine. Three buck.
Jim?
Yes.
All right. Just a question probably for our city attorney that you're aware of. Have any cities done an altogether plastic bag ban? Not the, not the buy one, not reusable, but outright ban of plastic bags?
You mean the, the alleged biodegradable ones?
No, the reusable.
I'm not...
Not, not the reusable?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
But see, that's...
Or a paper-only ordinance, a requirement that would be...
I'm not aware of...
But that's what we're trying to get to is a plastic bag ban. That was the original intent of this. And some retailers went through the product that they had and then made different decisions after they had gone through whatever product. So it's on everybody's radar, but I, I, I know that was my intention of the plastic bag ban, was that nobody would have them, including restaurants, including retailers. And that we...
And including the heavy-duty ones that, that are now just going into the way, but they're just going into the waste stream.
Yeah, they're being treated as single use. Absolutely.
Right. Just a question.
Yeah. So...
There are, there are mandates that do not allow, there are, there are mandates that are completely outlawed on plastic, plastic bags. So it has happened.
Okay.
So then what do you do about our big garbage bag or yellow, or orange and our blue ones?
No, no, for retail, anything.
Okay. But I mean, look at all those that we hand out here. We hand out a heck of a lot of blue and orange bags, but I guess there's no getting around that, right?
Just orange.
For municipal waste. Yeah.
That's a whole different...
Okay.
Yeah, that's just all that's...
So then do you, do we need a motion on this to...
No, you've given direction.
Oh, because you're going to come back. Okay. So you'll add plastic bags from restaurants, retailers?
Right.
And, okay.
Restaurants and retailers.
Goes into effect January 1st. And then we take off the...
Take off that one exemption that we talked about. And then I'll look in, in terms of the definition of, there's a definition there. I'll make sure that it doesn't exempt Vons from any of our regulations. That'll come back at the next meeting.
Perfect. Okay, item number seven. I think that's the section.
Six.
Six. I mean, six.
Give us a couple of minutes to set up, Annie. Can we have about a five-minute break?
Yeah, five-minute break, y'all.
Ollie, do you really want them to go through the whole Don and Paul show of talking about which funds are which funds after 22 budgets? I don't think I need it.
No, as soon as we come back, I'm suggesting we pull up the document as we get there.
I, I think all they need to do is say there were serious errors made by the prior acquaintance guy that means that the fund balance that was talked about in February does not exist.
And we're also questioning the starting balances because we haven't finished yet.
Wow.
And I think, I think if we...
But they're already admitting that there were accounting errors.
No, I understand. But what happens is they want to get it adopted. I don't want to adopt it till we have it on it. Now it's going to take 45 days. It's adopted after 45 days.
I think that's a great suggestion. Because I don't know what else they're...
I just, what's, what's going to happen, I think if we keep going through this bullshit, is we're going to start off with a blog budget, one way or the other. And also, I'm very unaffable to have a $3 million dollar deposit.
Okay. Well, then you know what I would like to have originally, and it makes sense to go through some of these projects, because I'm just talking about, I mean, that I have something to say about, and I think Cindy could, that to at least provide some direction here.
Okay, that's good.
On which one?
Matt? 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 I think there's some, there's some things we need to, there's some questions about some projects, and then we pull up first and then we get it done. I mean, that's something we need to discuss with me, but I mean, the Vons, we need to technically spend money right now.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I guess Congress...
We really need the whole presentation.
But, I mean, with one side out, it's definitely not going to be a full disclosure. But, one side out, it's going to be going to bend the budget, but the budget's been passed and I expect it's continuing to last. See, I'm not talking about the $3 million deficit. I don't mind taking money out of enterprise funds, but I'm going to get...
I mean, I think the Vons, the Vons balance, the general funds, and then we don't.
That's it?
I mean, that's...
I mean, I mean, the...
You're talking...
Ow, you've just, you've just reached the pain from my car.
Right.
Now I won't be able to sit for a sponge. I don't mind taking money out of enterprise funds, but I'm going to get...
I mean, I think the Vons, the Vons balance, the general funds, and then we don't.
That's it?
I mean, that's...
We just...
Because, well, we already have...
I mean, I mean, the...
You're talking...
Ow, you've just, you've just reached the pain from my car.
Right.
Now I won't be able to sit for a sponge. I mean, the, the, again, that's a lot of rethought, but I just believe that one.
But then, I mean, I can reach out to the mayor and...
I think Peple Beach is in the 2019.
Yeah, that's because I kept looking at the past year.
But I don't know how long it's going to be.
I'm going to...
So Phase One, so there's two projects that we don't complete in the 2019, which is very Friday. Full Phase One and Peple Beach Road. And I believe that Peple Beach is due to be up by December and then we face one issue. But I don't know when we would need to start them to leave them within the...
Six.
The starting numbers for September. I mean, that's assuming the auditors will make told us 45 days once they get all the info. That just means you guys sit on top of them to... Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
I lost it.
It didn't come up for me. It doesn't like me. Oh, I'm pushing around one that side. I'm voting no. Sorry, you'll have to clear me, Kathy. I'm voting instead of pushing this stupid computer. Annie, when we're done with this, we can...
Yeah. Oh, we're on. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Before we get, before I let the finance gentlemen start, I just wanted to say since our last council meeting, staff was directed to go through their budgets and tighten their belts, see what else they could cut from the budget. So that was the direction. My direction further to them is to cut what you could that didn't affect services to the community or personnel. And because I didn't feel that that was the direction, just see what, if there was extra more fat, so to speak, in their budgets that they could cut off. So staff did that exercise, came back, and then we had some other things. So I'll let these guys start from there.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna, we have some slides you want to go through, and we think it probably would be best if you hold your questions until the end, and then we'll come back and answer any questions you have. But what we're going to review with you is how we calculated the fund balances. Want to make sure you understand how we did that. Want to go over the, the items that the council requested be added to the budget on July 17th. Want to review the budget reductions that staff has identified. And we want to close with the discussion of revenue options. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Matt. He's going to go quickly through this fund balance discussion.
So the, the schedule we have on the screen is the projected fund cash balance. And so real quick, just to level set what this schedule tells us, is on the left, the funds are broken out. And there's essentially two types of funds. You have a general fund, and the general fund carries all the normal day-to-day operations of the city. So planning, fire would come out of the general fund. And those funds are unrestricted, meaning they can be spent how city council and the city feels appropriate. There's also restricted funds, and those would be enterprise funds or agency funds. The idea behind those funds is that the revenues they bring in should go towards the services those areas provide. So if you're using the harbor, the people that use the harbor should be the ones paying for the harbor services. And so that is what you read on the left. When we were tasked to put together the fiscal year 19 budget, what we wanted to do is we wanted to start with the first set of true numbers, if you will. And that's the last audited financials we have. And so the last audited financials, when we started the budget process, were the fiscal year 16 financials. And so the ending balance for the fiscal year 16 becomes the beginning balance of the fiscal year 17. And so that was our starting point when determining where our current fund balance is.
And what was that number?
The, as of the audited financials for the general fund, it was around 5.1 million. So how the, the schedule reads flows from left to right is we have our operating revenues. And so those are taxes, fees, licenses. We have our operating expenditures. That would be labor, contract, services, maintenance, et cetera, any internal service charges. And that would bring us to our net operating revenues or, or loss. And so those are the types of recurring expenditures you would see as a city. We break out separately kind of the one-time revenues you would see. So that would be like grant funding as well as one-time expenditures for, for major capital projects. And the, the end result you would get is whether there is an increase or a draw on fund balance, and you would have your ending balance at, at the very end of the schedule. So all, all the line items in the budget ultimately flow into this schedule. So you can see where the city starts the year with its funds, how it uses the funds that come in, and then ultimately where it projects it's going to end the year. So what I have on the screen right now is the fund balance schedule from the fiscal year 17 budget. The beginning balance on this document shows it at 6.1 million. When the fiscal year 17 budget would have been prepared, there still would have been in fiscal year 16. And so they would have had to have made a, we would have had to made an estimate as far as where we expected to begin fiscal 17 at. And there was a budgeted draw on fund balance in the general fund of 1.7 million. So what that essentially means is in fiscal year 17, we, we adopted a budget where expenditures exceeded our, our revenues in the general fund by 1.7. The next schedule I'm showing here is the fiscal year 18 budget. So in fiscal year 18, we would have been finishing up fiscal year 17. The first number I want to draw attention to is the one on the top left, and that is the beginning fund balance. So at this point in time, we would have had audited fiscal year 17, 16 numbers. And so the beginning balance, when comparing the 17 budget to the 18 budget, with respect to fiscal year 17, started with a million less than the general fund's beginning balance. And then the other number I would like to, to draw attention to is the net increase or decrease in fund balance. In the 18 budget, there was an estimated increase in fund balance of 800,000. And again, in the 17 budget, we had estimated a 1.7 million draw on fund balance. And so where the difference comes from is a $3 million transfer from the successor agency to the general fund. Again, when the 18 budget would have been built, this would have been an, an estimate or an assumption that we would have made. The transfer again was from a restricted fund, the successor agency, to a general fund. Generally speaking, you wouldn't see those transfers. So when Bob and I were preparing the fiscal year 19 budget, we decided to look more into what that, what the assumptions were behind that transfer to see whether we agreed that estimated or that assumed transfer should appear in the fiscal year 19 budget. So what makes up that three, 3.1 million is really two numbers. One is the beginning fund balance of 1.9 million. And so that would have been the cash in the successor agency as of July 1st, 2016. The second number is the 1.3 million, which is the net operating revenue expected or estimated in the successor agency. So those two numbers totaled 3.1, which was ultimately transferred. So there is an assumption made that those funds were available to be transferred to the general fund. And so they were included in the 18-year budget as a transfer to the general fund, which resulted in the estimated increase in fund balance of 800,000 rather than the, the originally budgeted draw on fund balance. So again, I apologize if this is a refresher, but as background, the city receives payments from the county twice a year. from the county twice a year to its successor agency fund. Most of these funds go towards paying our existing bond debt servicing obligations, and a portion of those funds the city is allowed to keep as an administrative allowance. And there's, there's two administrative allowances. One is the admin allowance, and the other is the permitted admin expenditures. And those combined to about 750,000 a year. Those are the only funds the city receives from the successor agency that are eligible to be transferred to the general fund to pay for the city's cost it assumes for, for managing that, that fund. So this is going into how the, the accounting works for that. And what happens is we receive twice a year a deposit from the county to pay the debt servicing obligations, as well as their administrative allowance. When that money comes in, we book it as a revenue to the successor agency. We then write a check essentially to the general fund from the successor agency for the city's allowed administrative allowances. When that money is deposited into the general fund, we would book a revenue in the general fund and an expenditure in the successor agency to avoid double counting that revenue in both the successor agency and the general fund. In the last year's budget, the offsetting expenditure in the successor agency wasn't budgeted. Again, when we would have been putting together the 18 budget, we would be in the middle of fiscal year 18, so these would have been estimated transactions where we were estimating what we would have done to finish fiscal year 18. And the reason I say that is because these haven't been booked in our accounting system. This was a, a number estimated as part of the, the budget process. So when we were asked to look or start developing the 19 budget, we wanted to make sure we understood why we were planning to transfer the beginning balance from the successor agency, as well as the net operating revenues. After reviewing it, it was our position that we didn't feel those assumptions were correct. And so we didn't include those in our fiscal year 19 budget. Why we didn't feel the assumptions were correct is we felt that the operating expenditures were understated in the successor agency by not recording the offsetting expenditure for the admin allowances. That resulted in an assumed net operating revenue, which we didn't believe to be the case. And then the second assumption that the beginning balance was eligible to be transferred, we also don't believe that was a, a correct assumption. And the reason for it is the city receives its ROPS payments in January and June. The financials, balance sheet numbers are as of June 30th. So that is before the bond payments are, are due for the city to actually pay. So in, it's correct that on July 1st, we had 1.9 million in the successor agency, but some of that money was already committed to pay debt servicing bond obligations that come out in August. And so the, the screen will show that the August statements reflect the portion of that beginning balance that left to pay the debt servicing obligations. And so that's why we, we don't believe that 1.9 is eligible to be transferred into the general fund, and we, we didn't agree with the, the estimate or the assumption that was in the, the prior year's budget. So the end result is, in preparing the fiscal year 19 budget, we felt that there was actually a 2.1 million draw on fund balance in fiscal year 17, which explains the difference between last year's estimated ending balance for fiscal year 18 and our estimated ending balance for fiscal year 18 as presented in the 19 budget. The screen here shows the reconciling the two numbers. Again, when we're putting together the budget estimates or the, the budget documents, we are putting it together during the fiscal year. And so we have to estimate revenues and expenditures for the last several months of the year. So there's always going to be variance when comparing one budget year to the next. A lot of those variances, though, as shown here, is just a matter of timing. So in last year's budget, for example, we estimated that we were gonna get the LA grant revenue in fiscal year 17. In actuality, we received some of that revenue in 18, and we're expecting to receive the, the remaining balance in fiscal year 19. So some of the difference between the balances is due to timing. However, the $3 million transfer, we don't believe is a, a timing difference. We don't believe those funds should have been assumed or, or estimated to be transferred into the general fund. And so that's how we start with a beginning fund balance in fiscal year 18 that differs from the, the prior budget's estimate.
And are we still using the 3.917?
Three point.
3,917,456.
Yes. There, there's a slight change, but it's about that number, yes. So right up here, we have the fund balance schedule that was presented during the study session on the 16th. Again, what it shows is we estimate that we finished fiscal year 18 and are beginning fiscal year 19 with approximately 3.9 million in the general fund's beginning balance. Again, when I'm saying these numbers, I'm looking at the general fund. It's important to, to look at each fund as its own separate entity, because there's restrictions, again, on how funds are able to, to spend the money, and because one fund has a balance, doesn't necessarily mean that money's available for the other funds. So we have a, a beginning balance, we estimated of 3.9 million in the budget that was presented during the study session. And we, during the study session, based on the, the revenues and expenditures that were discussed, estimated that to end fiscal year 19, there would be a drawn fund balance of approximately 450,000, and a remaining general fund fund balance of 3.4 million. We went back, as Denise mentioned, and made some adjustments to expenditures where we felt we could tighten the belt, if you will, without impacting services that are being provided. So this schedule here shows the changes that were discussed during the study session on the 16th that we brought back to city council on July 17th.
Where is that?
Page 9.
What page? I'm sorry.
9.
We, we have, again, gone through the, the belt tightening exercise where department heads came up with additional expenditures to look at that didn't impact services if we cut them. And so what the top row on the table is showing you is what the general fund's fund balance looked like on the June 16th study session. And the second row is where we believe the, or where our new budgeted impact on, on fund balance in the general fund would be as of, as of tonight's meeting. The, the reason for those differences is partially due to the changes that we had discussed during the study session on the 16th and subsequent city council meeting on the 17th of July, as well as additional expenditure cuts that were provided by department heads. So the new ending balance to the general fund after these proposed edits, the general fund, again, begins with 3.96 beginning balance and ends with approximately 3.7 million fund balance. This slide details the specific expenditures that were cut by the administration department. The next slide shows, uh, proposed expenditure cuts to IT and finance. And again, administration, IT and finance are internal services, so they ultimately roll up into the general fund, but any of those cuts would also be benefited for the other funds as part of the, the internal service expense calculation. And this slide is the other departments that impact the general fund with their proposed expenditure cuts. And then lastly, the, the harbor. So with, with those proposed cuts, the, this slide shows where the current proposed fiscal year 19 budget fund balance would look like.
Okay. So what we have here is our capital improvement projects. And what we're trying to show here are those projects that were budgeted last fiscal year. They may have, some of them may have been budgeted in the prior year as well. And we want to show you that, how much has been spent to date, and what's left to be spent, and how much of the project costs are being funded by grant money. So if you have any questions on those, Bob Greenlaw's available. Go through that, down that list, and he can describe each project.
Okay. So the first slide, we're looking at general fund, and of course, the most important column there is we look at the city funds required on the far right, because otherwise, it's money in, money out. And I can kind of give you the, again, the ratios of what the matches are here. But the Pebble Beach Road revetment repair, top project, that's the one I talked about that we're trying to do, emergency work there. We got 31 holes. It's funded by funds that we received from OAS from the disaster. Additionally, there was an insurance payment to us that should have funded the general fund for at least this amount. So that money should be back when that's what produced the revenue.
At least what amount, Bob? I'm sorry. The 362?
So that 362,142. And so that would have built up the general fund in anticipation of this, so it should have been a fully funded project. Then, uh, second line is the Five Corners project, and that's the one that I actually, that I said that we were going for an additional grant to get our match. This first piece here is really our engineering to get us up to the spot where we'd be ready to work toward construction. But our focus this year is really the engineering and getting the plans done, and that requires $13,000 in city funds until that, if we did, were successful with that grant, then that would kick in, and then we would have no city matching funds required. Okay? So then, see, those two CTVG projects, you see that's money in, money out. That's gonna, the second project is also very important, because those are, we're gonna put some curb ramps, and so some of the improvements, even further improvements around the Vons intersection, those, that would help supply some of the new ramps around there, besides what Vons is putting in. And then Dan could speak about it, if you have any questions about Joe Machado and the Recreation Master Plan. Those are, that, that rounds out what would be required of the general fund. Okay? And then so the next one up is harbor, and of course, we have the Harbor Master here to be able to speak to some of these too. But the first one up, the green pier repairs, you know, that's the one, again, that we were going for, the emergency project. We have the piles that are not in good shape. We need this, the report, the damage report was since 2015, so it's been kind of sitting idle at this point, trying to figure a good way not to spend so much in engineering to get this thing done. And I think we have achieved that with some of the meetings I had within this last week, working with a contractor and consultant, where we can really focus on getting at least that first project out, where we're getting a bang for the buck, and actually getting the improvements done instead of just paying for the engineering. Casino Way restroom improvements, and of course, that one's, we're ready to go on that. We have, you approved the plans on that, where you've purchased the materials, and then some of that work's gonna be done by city staff, but then we're gonna be getting bids from local contractors to do some of those technical pieces of the work, the plumbing and tile work and, and such. But what's important about that project to stay in is that it is focused on ADA improvements, and that restroom and those facilities are not ADA compliant at all. And besides, they're, for our visitor experience there, it is not a very good visitor experience to go into that, that restroom. So then that, of course, we're setting that up to be done as soon as the visitors are slacking off and that we can get in there and do that restroom. Storm damage, we're already doing that, and you're seeing that, and we're almost done with that. You know, we've got the railings left to do. The Cabrera Mole grate repair, that was from some additional money from the 2014 storm, and that helps fund that first phase that we're doing here, getting ready to go. Phase one, I've already talked, that we're ready to go. Got 100% plans, getting the last permit, and the next meeting, we'll be approving those plans and going out to bid.
What's the engineer's estimate on that project?
It's real close to this dollar amount right here. So I mean, it's gonna take every bit that we have. Okay? So, um, and, yeah, it's gonna take every bit. It looks like that we have sufficient funds, though. And you can see that, um, that's that 530,000, you know, and so that's an 80/20 split. And so that, for, you know, every $2 we put in, we're getting $8 back from the federal government. And so then we go to phase two, and then, so that's the first piece of work, and that estimate for that work may be a little heavy for this year. It could be maybe extended out, but it is a very robust project. I do say there is a million dollars, and I don't know if we'll accomplish all that whole million dollars within this fiscal year, but I put that in to be conservative. Okay?
Yep.
So I want to make sure that we're able to study what we need as we, studying what's happening with the floats, with the, getting the right architect and the team for the building, and then also for all the transportation improvements. And so it is, has a very large scope to it, and I want to make sure.
So this is all soft costs? 2 million is-
This is all, no, the first, it is $1 million, the proposed expenditures for this next year, and I say that could end up being 750,000, but I put a million-
But that's soft costs.
Yeah, and I think that's what the total engineering cost for that, that's gonna be. That's what our estimate is for total engineering. But it doesn't necessarily, it could maybe be stretched out into the next fiscal year.
And I'm sorry, what's the end date on those grant funds?
We, uh, so some of those grant funds, there's lots of pieces on those grant funds. There's some discretionary fairy funds that we need to get spent within this next year. Okay? And that's the first piece, but then it kind of, as we go in the back end, it could be stretched out a little bit, but we don't want to stretch it out too far, because we're actually getting the environmental studies, getting the permits, and so once you get ramped up and get ready to go, you need to launch it, you know? And, and the rest of the funds are there. So, and also the federal government is looking for us to produce. Otherwise, you know, you get the, the chance of loss of funds. So, you know, and that's part of the reporting in all these funds through Metro, the quarterly reporting, and the scene you're making progress. Fuel dock closeout, project closeout, that's remaining-
Wait, wait, wait. Did you already talk about the harbor?
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, sorry.
I passed that one up. I know that one's important. Yeah, so the, the harbor sediment study, and this number here was because I had asked to go for an RFP to, to decouple the dredging from the, also the, the structural wall and support, something, the system that would stop our sediment from being removed, our sand from being moved. And we were trying to couple that with the Mole project, because Mole Phase Two, some of those solutions from that project could provide that structural need or could provide some type of different mooring system, so that's why-
Is there some reason that we're not applying for Division of Boating Waterway funds for this?
Yes. And the, we are applying for those coming up. Okay? But realize, when you look at the details on that, that is actually part of what's included in the state budget. So those are line items in the state budget, so it's not just like it's a competitive pool of money. We get, after we get a successful grant award, then it goes to the state legislature, and then they include those projects as a lineup. So it's, it's possible that that could be 2021 that we see that money, maybe 20-
That's not what happened last year. They, they, the applications to DWS for beach erosion under that specific program. They take applications in February, they dispense that money in, in the following-
But then it goes into the state-
In the following year.
Then it goes, has to get approved in the state budget.
But this, it, it always approved. It's always approved.
It depends on what-
Okay. And then on the sedimentation study, the technical manual, aren't we up to 1.35 on that project?
So that was a draft study. Okay? And that hasn't been approved by me, all the details in that. And there's a lot of details that were thrown in- And there's a lot of details that were thrown in by the consultant, and you'll hear that when it is presented next, next meeting. But, I mean, my reach out to consultants has been intense within this last two weeks since I received that study. And so I've been talking to the, to the contractors that actually do all the sediment, re-nourishment on the beaches within Southern California, and so the biggest dredges that are happening here, those contractors, and trying to get what is the correct system for us to bring in here. So what that is, that's a big wag right there. And so what I was talking with the contractor is, this is the number that we need to be in the range of for it to be feasible for us. Okay? So when it's $1 million, that it's a wag, you know, that's bringing the biggest dredge over here, and it's very costly. For us.
Okay, good. I'll be interested to hear your evaluation of that engineer's report, because it opened my eyes pretty wide.
Yeah, well, that's not, it's not doable for us for that price.
No.
Okay? So that's what that number is, is a holding spot for that, to get that work done. Okay? And more to come on that, as we see. Okay? And then the Fuel Dock Project Closeout, so that's impending items with the Fuel Dock Closeout, and so that's what an estimate is for that number. And then, some of those are the other pieces of the Fuel Dock as we finish it up, and we're doing those things with the fuel float, and some of the things inside the building. Okay? And that's, those are the last pieces of that. Any questions on that Harbor piece?
Nope.
Okay? Okay, and then, of course, the Internal Service. A lot of this is IT, so the general upgrades, mobile work orders, so that, you know, that kind of that, that whole list of stuff that Pat Grady talked to you on the 17th. And that's been pared down, like the access control, where you saw that there was actually, I think, 40,000, where there was 30, and then 10. And so that was trying to get the access control, and a lot of that was focusing right here at City Hall, and being able to get rid of the keys. And so, and that, that becomes problematic, you think, why do we need that? Well, just to give you an example for public works, I have all kinds of maintenance staff that don't have a key to here. Okay? They don't have a key here, and we have a time clock here. And they may need to be able to use a time clock. I can move the time clock to the outside, but it's just easier if we had access control, and then we could start having a system where even if we had other keys, somebody, because it's not just not having the keys, and then we have to control all that, but who's going in our building at what time? Because it date stamps that, and it controls all of that. And we know who's accessing it. And that's, that's where it's happening these days. And then, it also is better for the security around the building, because not everybody having a key, they're looking as, well, now that we're trying to lock all the doors around the outside, and, you know, and that's what cities and businesses are doing these days for security. And this allows with that card, some easier access to come in, because we have those cards, and we're using them for our fuel system or other gates. So that's just an example of some of this. Is there any questions on some of this list here?
Questions or discussion?
Discussion? Yeah, I'm just saying for me.
Or maybe we'll just save discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to get, get through this, too. So, and then, new projects, and you can see some of the ones that are still here. City Park Lighting was a request, Front Street Shading, Dog Park. Okay? And then you can see Teen Center Improvements, Money In, Money Out. Cemetery, those are projects that are funding mainly material, and that's public work staff that's going to be doing those improvements, and those are long-term improvements. We probably wouldn't use all of that, but it's there as we have time to fit that in. Good example is a new cemetery. We don't have all the fencing done there, so we have temporary fencing in front of it. And so if we don't get the materials to be able to do that, that's one of the things we'd like to make progress on this year. Also, as we have the frontage improvements, so cavers going into that cemetery, we'd like to finish those up, too, so that we can, you know, once we open that up and we start using that cemetery, you know, it's, it looks like it's usable. Some of the other fencing, you know, we can work on that over time. But it's also having enough funds, so if we have to buy enough for all of it, you know, just go and get, get it all purchased at one time, and then it's ready to go when we have time to do it. So we get that economy of scale. You have your 206 East Whitley funding in there. Security cameras, that was mainly around City Hall. Skata upgrades, that's happening, most of those are happening at the, at the pump station besides the plant, but at the Pebble Beach Road Lift Station, that's where we're putting in the new panel, and that's going to be happening here, actually, at the end of this month. So before we had the spill, we actually were doing another project, because we had put in a main electrical panel, we did the CIP project, and now we're putting in the skata. So we have, all of that kind of upgrades an older system. Centrifuge was an existing project, and you'll see that that actually gets done here now that we have this energy audit, because then it's, that's why we were waiting on that, was to get the right unit ordered, okay? Get that input. And then sewer system repairs and replacement, and the lift station there. And so those are just for the, the items as we need during the year to get those done. And then the trash, trash and recycle, okay? Which you requested.
I just want to make one correction, the security cameras there, the 17,000 are along the waterfront.
And there is also City Hall security cameras as part of Internal Service.
That was on a different slide.
Yep.
This one, he just said City Hall, so she was just clarifying that.
Okay.
It was Harbor.
So the deferred capital projects. So maintenance yard improvements, eventually, we're going to have to get to that. Hopefully, when we close out our capital project for the 2016, the one that's done, and maybe there's some funds on some of that that are left, as we close that out, and put the final numbers on the book here very quickly. Because honestly, we haven't finished up the road there, we need to look at the buildings, we need to get some surveying done, so that's what that project's about. Exterior maintenance on City Hall facilities, I mean, we're really not doing hardly any maintenance that we need to do. And so that's a focus on not losing staff and not losing funding on, for the materials, because preventative maintenance, just like we had the discussion on the road, if we don't do that, we're going to be into big bucks. And so at least we need to have, you know, and that's what Jamie's going to be doing for us, is really putting those preventive maintenance plans together and bringing that capital plan together. But this is just a number, holding number, it says, hey, we need to be doing some things, because we can even see it visually now that they're falling apart. Workforce housing for city staff, that was that concept, and it's deferred now, but of course, we have property here, because we said we didn't have any city property, but we do have property here around City Hall that could be reconfigured, and so that could, and so that, what that was, is really the study of the potential for that, so that the city could own some housing that could provide housing for some staff that they would be bringing over from the mainland, so that we would have some of those options, because I could tell you even personally, it is very difficult to find housing here. And so you did make that decision to find, to come over here for employment, that, you know, how are you going to attract those people? And then, you know, just like our city attorney comes over here, and we have our building inspector, how do we house them and not pay for rooms at high rates? So that was that concept. The Via.
Oh, no, never mind.
Okay, the Via Casino Arch Repairs, that number there was really for a contractor getting there, replaster that. And right now, we're just sticking paint on it, so we're cleaning it up and sticking paint, and so.
So if we have a storm, how subject is that to being further damaged?
It doesn't have an outside plaster on the backside, it's in very bad shape on the backside. And then the rest of it, you know, it, it probably could weather a good storm, but at some point, if it's a major storm, it's going to chew into that second coat of plaster, and then from there, you know, it starts getting into the structure.
And is the 32,000 that you proposed, would it protect that?
Yeah, what this 32,000 was to re-go fix up the plaster and make this thing look what it should be for historical structure. It should be, look renewed, you know? And so, you know, it seems like a lot of money for what it is, not just a coat of paint, but it really was get in there and detail out that, match that plaster, get in there and dig out the loose plaster and match that plaster and put a new coat of paint on. Tile's still in good shape. It's really, and then it just really needs a good cleaning, deep cleaning there on some of the tile, and getting that done. It looked like roof on it was in decent shape, we need to get up on top and take a look at that. But this was really to look at that plaster around there that was damaged, right there at Step Beach. Okay? Casino Way showers, so that was, again, that's not ADA compliant, so at some point, we need to at least start the engineering on that and get that underway to help, at least if we had an ADA claim and say, hey, we've got the engineering started. Right now, we're not doing that. Green here, Green Pier Restroom Rehabilitation, same kind of thing, not totally ADA compliant. But most of that is in good shape, you know, a lot of those improvements can stay. And then the Casino Way restroom, so we're doing the interior of the restroom, but we're not doing the exterior, so the roofing needs to be replaced. Crescent Avenue upgrades, so the electrical upgrades near our stage and all of the planners, they're, are not up to code, and they're not up to the capacity that we need to have a vent, especially at the stage. So that big number there is really to bring it up to something so we can keep on having the vents we want, and to have the safety. Okay? South Beach Sand Reinishment, Baffle Wall, the installation, that was really, we, really, that's a piece of the other, really, the Mole, that line can be, you know, we don't, we don't even need that right now, because that really is in that, it's a redundant piece. Green Pier Rehabilitation, Green Pier Crane, so those are all things that need to be done. And then, so what this is, this whole list is, it came off the capital list, and it was to start looking at things for annual maintenance and to do preventive maintenance, and so that we can start having a line item in the budget, we all can recognize each year that we're putting this much annually to these areas to keep our preventive maintenance up. So we'll continue on in that.
You know, Bob, I think what would be helpful, to me at least, would be to have some priority.
Yeah.
And I could, and I could tell you that one of the things I'm most concerned about is saving a buck today only to spend 10 next year. So that was my question about Via Casino. If we could spend 10,000 this year to avoid spending 50,000 next year, because a storm comes in and it's entirely foreseeable that we're going to have extensive damage because we didn't do some plaster work, then I want to know that, because I'm clearly going to say, let's spend the 10,000 this year.
Okay.
And, and I don't know that just looking at this list tells me that. It's, it's a wish list, but a wish list has to have some sort of prioritization given to it.
So what we're working to, there, there has been capital improvement programs that have been produced, and just like we had sewer capital improvement program and financing for the next 20 years, it was produced in 2013, that needs to be updated, and that needs to be done for everything we're doing. I'm working with finance.
Okay.
To get that done. And then you would have the details, and you would have the details on the detail sheet, and then you would see the cash flows of how that would happen, and then it should be a community-wide process, and we go through, that's usually what I've done.
Yeah, I think the problem is, there is no cash flowing. And so we are stuck with the enviable task of saying, there are only a few dollars to be spent, how can we best spend them?
Yes, and that's what we're trying to present.
So as opposed to creating a wish list of every, you know, of, or a needs list, something that gives us a little more guidances to where do we put our priorities?
So that's what has been suggested and proposed here for, as we go through the existing projects, and then that they're, they're with the grant funds, and they're projects that are well along the way of why we're doing that, and you're getting a bang for the buck on that. As we're getting into some of this maintenance, hopefully, what you're seeing is that we're funding a level of maintenance, and a lot of this maintenance can be done even with our own crews. And it's just, and you'll start understanding, because we'll present that, of this is what this 25,000 goes to, to get that done, and it really does that preventive maintenance. So I can understand what you're saying, it's just, right now, there's so much of this to do, and there also, there's so much to do in a capital program, which you will see as we build through it this next year, that's presented that way. But, you know, we've been doing other things, too, not just.
Sometimes the grant money's expiration date kind of moves some projects to the top, because.
No, I've, I've watched budgets for decades, so I know how that works.
So I mean, as, you think about, at least in my head, how I prioritize and help recommend priorities is the grant funds, is like, can we leverage our dollars? And then I'll be starting to look at what is the highest benefit, we get value of something, and then also the greatest reduction of risk versus when you look down and you get the lowest value and the lowest reduction of risk. And so those come up, a lot of those can sort out real quick, and if we can think about things that way, you start looking, can we get our dollars leveraged? Can we reduce our risk? Can we get great value for spending $1 instead of, you know, yeah. And so those, that's what is actually being suggested to you is with these proposed projects. You know, all of that thinking has been put in there when we do recommend those projects. Okay? I got, there's some other department heads, I guess, if you had any other questions on this list of projects.
I got to tell you, he's covered, he covered the Harbor pretty well. I mean, obviously, we have some issues that we need to deal with, and we all know about them, the Mole, the sand sediment, the pier. Today, we shut down the hoist on the pier, because the crane inspector that inspected it last week felt that the crane itself is good, it's the pier underneath it that's not good, and the bracing. So we've completely taken that out of, out of the, out of the use, you can't use that. And they got a fishing tournament going on, so we've contacted the tuna club, and they're going to have to drag their fish up at the, up the crane. So these projects, they're not, they're, it's not like a wish list, it's a needs list. Like, I like the way your term to use there, it's a needs list, because we, we deferred maintenance on the Mole for years and years on those floats, on the, with the way the Express ties up, and, you know, it's, it's something that we have to address. And in our Harbor Fund, we have the money to address it, it's just going to dilute the Harbor Fund tremendously, and, and that's not a, that's not a good practice. So as for our priorities in the Harbor, on the Harbor side of the fund, you know, obviously, the Mole has got to be a top priority, because that's the number one transportation hub of Avalon. It's the first thing people see, the beach, you got an eight-foot drop. We all want sand up there, because our insurance people are going to say, you got to have sand up there, you can't afford somebody falling off eight feet. So it's, you know, it's tough to prioritize it, and, and I look at it from the standpoint that the Mole, the pier, the beach replacement, the sand, the tying up at the Express, that's priority number one in my eyes, in my toolbox. That's priority number one. Now, how do we get to that point? There's some revenue suggestions that are going to come up tonight, and, you know, we're going to have to make some hard decisions, so. I wish I had a better, you know, I mean, this is eye-opening to me, from coming out of the boat into, into this environment and, and seeing what needs to be done, so. But you guys know that, I mean, I'm not telling you something you don't know, you know.
And then the depressing words on page, the bottom of page 16? For the 50, oh, no, we're.
Well, that just talks about the.
In 1920, how that stuff would look.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the slide on, at the bottom of page 16, that's the one we showed you a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And it basically shows that if we use cash to pay for the Mole and related projects in the Harbor, the Harbor Fund will be out of cash, out of reserves by the end of fiscal year. year 1920.
Yeah.
So as JJ mentioned, we do have some revenue options. These are for your, for discussion. But let me go over them quickly, and then, you know, we'll, you can come back to them. The transient occupancy tax, the TOT, it's the largest revenue source for the city. It's all tourism-based, it's people that come over to visit Avalon, visit the island, and they stay at our hotels. They pay the 12% tax. So currently, the rate is 12%. It generates 5.4 million in revenue a year. Under the city municipal code, 22% of the annual revenue, approximately 1.2 million, is paid to the Chamber of Commerce for marketing and promotion of the city. A 1% increase would generate about 450,000 per year of new revenue. We would suggest that if the council was interested in that, it does require voter approval, that any incremental increase in the revenue go entirely to the general fund. So the, and the next slide, that one. I did call the State Board of Equalization to confirm where we're at with regard to the sales tax. What happens in LA County is that LA County, over the last 10, 15 years, has gone to the voters for adoption of various MTA-related sales taxes. As a result of that, LA County was in danger of going over the cap. So they went to the legislature, and the state legislature authorized exemptions on some of those MTA taxes from the cap. So according to the State Board of Equalization staff, there's a little bit of wiggle room if the city was interested, City of Avalon were 0.25%, a quarter percent under the cap, so we could increase with voter approval the local sales tax by a quarter percent. A quarter percent generates about 250,000 per year. We have an admissions tax, the current rate is 4%. If the rate was increased, again, with voter approval, to eight, to 4.4% or 4.8%, that would generate somewhere between 65,000 and 130,000 per year of additional revenue. The cross-channel surcharge, that's what we talked about back in July 16th and 17th, does not require voter approval. A dollar surcharge each way would generate about 1.3 million dollars per year for harbor-related projects. Since it's a tidelands-related revenue, it has to be spent within the tidelands, that for us, that means the harbor, essentially. And then the last slide, revenue options.
And just back to that, and...
Sure.
When you all were thinking about the $2 round trip thing, were you all thinking of a time limit on that?
We were thinking, yes, thank you for reminding me about that. When we first introduced this subject, we had suggested that it sunset after a couple of years. You know, my preference would be that if you're gonna impose a, include a sunset on there, that'd be two and a half to three years. Because the surcharge, if you sunset it at the end of two years, that's sufficient to pay for the mole projects and all the projects that Bob and JJ talked about. However, it still doesn't leave it with a lot of fund balance in the harbor fund. So if you extend it for another year beyond the two years we're suggesting, that will help build up a little fund balance to pay for capital projects and future needs in the harbor.
Okay.
Okay, the next slide shows a utility users tax. And we don't have one in place right now, but I was doing a research with the municipal code, and I found a section, section 303.605, which...
Yes, we used to have utilities.
Provides for a utility users tax on electricity.
It had a sunset many years ago.
Well, that's what we don't know. It requires additional research. According to the municipal code, the council could have chosen to suspend, to reduce or suspend the electric UUT in the event that the city adopted a 0.5% sales tax, or if congressional approval designated the city as a port of call. So I did check with Scott Campbell, our city attorney. He confirmed that, my reading of the municipal code is correct, it does exist, it does not require, or would not require voter approval for the city council to reinstate the UUT. If, you know, it looks to me, without doing a lot of research, that it was in place at one time, and it, and somewhere over the years, the city council voted to suspend the electric UUT, but it's still on the books. And so a lot of cities have utility users taxes, it does hit everybody, it would hit everybody if the council decided to go to the voters with that. And a lot of cities have it on the use or consumption of natural gas, water, electricity, and phone. And I did a calculation based on the franchise fee payments that we received from the Edison Company, where they provided the information on their statement of gross sales. I just use that as the basis for calculating what a 1% UUT might generate on gas, water, and electricity. Again, this is food for thought, but that leads us to our last slide and our conclusion. So the general fund projected ending fund balance is about 3.7 million dollars. If you just do the math, that's sufficient to pay for operating expenditures for three months. But the way that the city operates is the general fund from time to time helps subsidize the non-general funds. And if, and that's city history and tradition. So the fund balance in the general fund may be sufficient for the general fund, but it's not sufficient to pay for all the needs of all the other funds. And it's clear to me, and I think it's clear, we try to make it clear in our presentation, that the draw, really, the pressure on the general fund is to pay for capital projects. That's what's hitting the fund balances. So we've identified options to cover the $2 million funding gap in the mole. The obvious option, the one we're recommending, is the surcharge. So our, our recommend, our recommendations for tonight would be that the city council consider increasing the cross-channel surcharge, depending on how much, if anything, the council approves. You know, the lesser amount, it's gonna take us longer to generate the money. We need a higher amount at the outset is gonna, is gonna generate the revenue more immediately. In addition to that, we suggest that you consider increasing the TOT to a 14% rate, and that could be permanent, or it could sunset at some point in the future. And increase the sales tax, again, a quarter percent, that would require voter approval. So in conclusion, our recommended action for today is that you adopt a budget. We're currently operating without a budget. We're using the last year's budget as our, as our operating tool, and adopt today's budget with the knowledge that you can amend the budget on any day of the year. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
And as far as the admissions tax, I would like to propose bringing back a change to the ordinance on admissions tax that in, it was 1964 when the city council adopted the 4%. Then in 1994, you amended the code to reflect that nonprofits didn't have to pay it. So if we brought that back and removed that section of the code, then it would be an extra 90 to 100,000 into the general fund.
You want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I, we just need to, if we're expanding it to a new group of taxpayers, we may have to go to the voters for that, so.
How is that, Scott?
Well, because we'd be exempted if certain nonprofits are, are exempted from tax. So if we're gonna impose a, we're gonna be a broadened amount of people that are subject to a tax, even though it's the same tax, but we're adding a new class, that probably requires a Prop 218, 218 hearing and approval. So.
So of all these recommendations, John, what we could do is the head tax. Everything else has to go to an election.
The one that you can easily do, well, not, not easily, but the cross-channel surcharge is a fee because it's based upon the use of harbor, and so the council can do that itself.
But the rest need to go to an election?
I, I'm pretty certain, I know that TOT does increase, I know the sales tax does. I'm pretty sure that the adding a new class of people, the nonprofits, but we can double-check that.
And my recollection is that the utility users tax sunsetted by its own language, which I think implicates Prop 218 as well.
And so the next time we get up this stuff is 2020?
Well, the basically is, if it's a general tax, it has to be done at a general election, which is usually defined as when the city council's up. If it's a special tax for a special purpose, then you can do that as a special election. For instance, the hospital, if you had a tax for the hospital, you could do that earlier. But we'd have to look at, we could be aggressive in looking at how you define a tax, to see if we can create a special fund for it, and that would qualify as a special tax, you could do it earlier.
I personally have been uncomfortable adopting a budget tonight.
Me, too.
I'd like to wait the 45 days until the audit's done, so that we know, we have confidence of what the starting numbers are. I just don't have a, good explanation, but I still have a whole bunch of confidence about it.
I actually think it's not a good explanation. I, I think I'm actually kind of hurt because I said to Matt and Denise, I don't blame you for the numbers, you're not responsible for the numbers. And over the weekend, I started looking at the budget, and I'm gonna post this, because I think people are not gonna understand why you gave this big explanation about the successor agency funds got transferred, and they shouldn't have been transferred. I think people should understand it, and I just want to show this, because I, I think the public has a right to know.
Well, the right to know that somebody screwed up, is that basically what it was?
Yeah, that's basically what it is. As of February of this year, the finance director told everybody that the projected fund balance for general funds was 6.5 million, and it's actually, what, 3.9 is what we're saying.
Right. Okay, so someone screwed up, these guys caught it, and the director found the situation, so I don't know what...
No, I, no. But the question is, when do we know about this? Obviously, at the time you put the budget together.
But they didn't know until the guy left and these guys came on.
No, because the proposed budget that they presented to us is 3.9, which, good for you guys for catching it. But I think it's something that should have been front and center in discussing the budget.
Well, Pam, I made, can I, can I say?
I'm not pointing at...
No, I want to explain. I want to take full responsibility for this. I told finance, they came and they asked me, and they said, this is what we've discovered right now. We're still doing our own internal audit. We're trying to see what are the things haven't been booked in the proper funds. They were cleaning it all up. I wasn't gonna, like, cry wolf right away. We wanted to continue forward and find what we had. They asked me, do you want us to continue the number that Mr., that the former person had put on as our fund balance, or do you want us to put what the numbers we think they are? And I said, put the numbers you think that we are at till we finish up the cleanup.
Okay.
And so now, we've brought forward what it, what we think has transpired, and, and so, I don't know what else you want me to say, Pam.
Okay.
I just, I don't think this is appropriate. I share this with the public because I think it's important information. If you went through the budgets and you looked at it, this is what the information is that was presented to the public, and you need to know that the correct number, based on going through the budgets, is the 3.9 million, not the 6.5 that the public was told in February, when we did the budget revision. Okay?
But that's because, Bob, the other gentleman was here.
So we're explaining tonight that those were not normal accounting mistakes, or just some error.
Right, right. So we're just glad that the gentleman found it.
Okay. So I would personally like to be able to read, and I can't see these. So if we can put these in just a file and put it on the share file with separate ones, and if we could have the full Excel spreadsheet, not just the, like, with the projected fund balances and everything else that you have, I would like to review that, too.
We'll be happy to email you the current version. You did receive a draft last night via email. You should be able to open that and print it. But we'll provide you printed copies tomorrow.
Of this?
Yeah, yes.
No, not of the Excel.
Well, the slide.
Yeah, I know, I printed out the first version of this because I was gone over town yesterday. But the, the full budget, the full Excel spreadsheet, I'd like to see.
Well, I'm hearing that the two of you really don't want the budget to be approved tonight, and I don't have a problem with them trying to get something to work, go, going forward on. However, so whatever happens there. But I think the dialogue on, if, are we ready to talk about what we think are solutions to some of our problems? We can say, hey, we're okay to end up with the fund balance we are, and we don't do anything. That's one option, correct? We just don't touch anything. But then we go, if we want to move forward on some things, we're going to have to make decisions on how to generate funds.
I, I actually can, I do have some questions about the presentation, which at least then we could get some information about.
Okay.
So as I brought up in the last discussion that we had three weeks ago, that it looked based on three months' worth of city attorney bills, that we were down into the 20 or 30,000 dollar range as opposed to 50,000, but I see there's a city attorney reduction of 10,000 here. Does that carry out in all of the accounts?
That wasn't just an additional, we had already cut about 20%, didn't we, in the first, first round?
So the, the first round did include, I believe, a 10% reduction in the, the largest expenditure account for the city attorney in the administration.
So the general retainer, which is 200 and something?
The general retainer went from, I believe, 300 to, to 280. We reduced that by another 10,000 in this round.
Okay, could we see the, the, all of the accounts? Or do you know the total? Are we down from 515 to what?
I, I...
Because the annualized amount that I had come up with was 388. So I'm just hoping that we're around there.
I think trending, that's what the way it's been the last four or five months.
Right, which is why I thought, let's budget that. Let's, okay.
Again, I can get back to you with that.
So you know the, the five retainer accounts?
Yes.
Okay. That would be helpful to see, because that's a good savings, a significant savings. And then I had some questions about the GIS, the Public Works wants to do, and the overlay, but I think Bob went home. Does anybody know, or, oh, he's behind the dates.
He's hiding.
So, Bob, I went online and looked at a lot of these programs, and it looks like you have to input, score a lot of information in order to utilize these programs. In other words, you have to show what your plumbing program is, your electrical, for each asset that the city owns and maintains.
Yeah, and it's, it's over a period of time that we'd be inputting that, and that's why we also want to get the GPS in it. So that we're making our system more accurate every time we're going out there and we're doing work, we're getting plans with coordinates in them, we're out there actually doing work on something, we get coordinates, and then we bring it in, and then we have a stack of stuff that goes to our GIS consultant and says, okay, and it may be three months' worth, and said, here, as a batch, go do this and update our system. Because then that's gonna make our mapping more accurate.
So is this for the software, or is this for the consultant, or both?
So we're talking on the...
My recollection was that it was GPS Public Works, 15,000?
Okay, the GPS is, really, that's our field, our, our field collection hardware and the software to support that. Okay, so that's us, actually, Public Works, and maybe ES's staff, as we go out and are doing our work, or whatever piece of infrastructure it is, and collecting data on that, and bringing that back in. Okay? So it's, it's a field unit.
Okay. Because my, my general observation, and I appreciate the cuts that were made in IT, were that technology is only as good as you have people to put the input, the data that needs to be inputted, and people who understand how to use the program and then actually use the program. And looking at those Public Works programs, if you're gonna schedule maintenance, or replacement, or any of those kinds of things, you have to have the full building described and all of its parts in order for those programs to help you. And I just wonder, at what point, whether for a city with as, as few assets as we have, does it make sense? Because it's not just this 15,000 expenditure. I mean, this is the beginning.
There is the piece of equipment that we need to be able to get the data in there, because right now, we don't have that type of equipment here. I know how to use it, I can train others to use it.
Okay. So you're just talking about coordinates for where things are.
Coordinate, yeah. Then, nothing, right now, our system is not accurate, okay? Our GIS system doesn't, and that's normal when you first build it, because you're just taking anything you have and putting that together.
So this is just the GIS? Because for some reason, I had read into it that it was also Public Works, maintenance, overview, or something like that.
It has part of our maintenance capability. As we're going out there and we're doing maintenance on it, we're taking a coordinate on that. And so we're trying to make it...
Okay, but it's more than just, I mean, the programs that I looked at are more than just where something is.
And then what's also important is, there's other entities on the item, like SCE, that are going and doing and getting... are going and doing and getting everything accurate, up to a ninety-five percent level, and we'll all be sharing this data on that, and then with the Island Company, same thing, we're sharing data and making this mapping more accurate, be very robust for all these entities to be able to describe our infrastructure, our city, our property lines.
To what end?
To what end, it's very necessary to be able to, able to, be able to describe what's out there, to, to be able to do the maintenance, or even to know what's existing out there. Right now, I have a line that describes where a sewer line is, may not be that accurate. If I need to go dig up that street, I need to know where that sewer line is within, you know, a foot of it actually being there, otherwise I'm going to go out there and do that thousand cuts of trying to find that.
Because you don't have that data, you're going to have to wait till you dig that line up.
We are, every time that we go out there and dig in there, we're going to go grab some coordinates when anything's exposed. That's one of our most important features of this, is that somebody goes out there and digs a trench.
Okay, sewer, plumbing, what else?
Whether it be SCE, whether it be us, whether whoever's digging, we can go out there.
Okay, no, underground, that makes sense to me. If we don't actually have maps or something that can guide where those things are, it makes sense to me that you'd want to create a document that can does that.
Yes, and that's what this is, yes, that's what this is, and other.
So I misunderstood, we're not talking about, you know, somehow cataloging everything that's in City Hall here and assigning some maintenance schedule to it?
No, 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 this is our infrastructure out in, you know, our public infrastructure.
Underground infrastructure, okay.
Sewer, water, roads, property lines, whatever it is we have out there, where is it physically on, and where is it in relation to everybody else's stuff, too?
Okay, because my concern is, as I said, when we talk about getting technology, let's analyze, is somebody already doing it? Is it such little amount of information that it doesn't make sense to try to turn it into, you know, put it into a software program? If it's forty people in a fog program, honestly, is technology going to make that much of a difference over an Excel spreadsheet? Okay, so, thank you for that explanation, that was, that was really helpful. And then I had a question about the booking on our landfill fees, the closure fees. Do we have a separate, don't we, aren't we required by state law to have a separate closure fund?
We do, it's with Northern Trust, and CalRecycle just did another evaluation of it, ooh, maybe two thousand and fifteen, Pam, and they come back and.
Okay, because we're treating it as an expenditure, but it seems to me, isn't it more a transfer? Although, is, I guess, because we don't hold the fund?
Well, we pay them, Councilmember, we pay them a certain amount each year, I forgot the figure, it's like.
It's a hundred thousand.
It's like a hundred thousand, I just talked to the folks two weeks ago.
Right.
And they sent over a schedule of payments, because we didn't have one in our records, but we record it as an expense, because there's money going out.
Okay.
But it's going into the trust account.
Okay, but we don't maintain the trust, so it's not treated as a transfer, okay.
No, no, we don't, they, Northern Trust, yeah, they manage it for us, they invest the money.
They don't trust us.
They don't, yeah. Okay, that, that's, I mean, as much as I could go through just sitting here and looking at it.
Do, and, does anybody have questions, kind of along the lines of what Councilman Albers was talking about, or do we want to start a little conversation about, is there a need to raise funds? And if so, what do we think? You know, I looked at the sewer fund, I'm a little concerned about that one, that was coming, going down to nothing. So I don't know when we, when we talk and tackle that, if we need to increase, increase those, I don't know how.
Well, the sewer, there is a five-year increase, a five, over, and aren't we in year two?
Yeah.
And what are the cash flow projections from that versus the expenditures?
We have capital projects, we were saying six hundred thousand within, we have a one point two plus balance, and we're going to use six hundred thousand at for projects right now, this year. We'll see what's also left from the capital project, we'll finalize those numbers from the two thousand and sixteen, where we did those sewer improvements, to see what gets us also through this lift station incident, okay? And then, as you're seeing us get through that energy audit at the plant, and that, that two thousand and thirteen capital improvement plan, that was all of our sewer infrastructure, just take a look at that and update that. Now that's going to give us, you know, so it's not something tonight, that's something, you know, as we move forward and start tackling those at a piece at a time, and then see what, you know, what the fee structure is on that, if it's supportive of that.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about the, those today?
And since the proposed increases are not in the proposed budget, we would have to have that as a separate agenda item?
They just are talking about doing an amendment, I think.
For which item?
For the proposed increase in fees.
Well, you'd have to bring a separate agenda item to actually accomplish that.
We just need to know what your feel is.
But you can give direction as part of the budget.
Well, if we're going to go with the improvements to the sewer system, and we, and we're going to end up with no money left at the end of the year, is it better to, to tackle that a little sooner, or, you know, we're how many years, four months, three months into this fiscal?
I already had the two eighteen here.
What's that?
I already had the two eighteen here.
I know, can you do another one?
Yes.
I guess we can.
Okay, well, that would be the question.
Do you, do you know the ones you've already approved? Because it's about fifty percent over five years.
Okay, but if, but if we're projecting that we're not going to have any money at the end of the year, is that really enough? And maybe that's a fine F, to look at what those numbers are.
Well, the sewer funds, with last year's increase, the, the, I call them the sewer funds, I know there's three of them, okay? Sewer, saltwater, solid waste. The, the revenue increases, the rate increases the city council approved last year, a five year schedule, those are sufficient for the funds, I think, to break even, maybe throw off a little bit of cash, but if we have significant capital projects, those aren't sufficient to throw off enough revenue to pay for those capital projects.
Right.
So one of the funds has a, a little fund balance, the others are pretty much break even.
Right, right. Well, nobody wants to deal with that now, we can look at it mid-year budget, mid-year budget?
Well, but one thing that I would like to suggest, if, if we're going to come back and, and continue the discussion about the budget, if you could give us some direction about, what would you like us to come back with?
Okay.
Just, just so you know, on the general tax issue, whatever general tax is, the next time you can put it on the ballot is April twenty twenty, unless the council unanimously declares a fiscal emergency, and then you could put it on earlier.
This is a special election.
Yes.
Can you consolidate with the county then, on one of their elections?
The county doesn't have an election next year.
What?
There's no county election next year.
Well, then it'll be a special.
Yeah.
Then you have to weigh the cost of the election, because to how much money you can rent. Okay, well, let's, let's.
Well, okay, I'm just going to make a general observation, I think the people in this town are overburdened as it is. I think that the tourism industry is up against a line, and that with every dollar you add to the boat ticket, every increase you do in the TOT, we're going to see fewer people, and that, that although it sounds good on paper, look how much money it'll generate, it doesn't generate that money if you don't have people coming. So it seems like, I mean, I get that you're, you feel like you're up against a wall, and I hate to say it, but part of the, the, what I think we need to look at are strict fiscal policies like a hiring freeze, no new positions, you know, things that we've done in other years, like when the recession hit, and made some hard decisions that I think we need to go back to. We're up to eighty-four FTEs, you know how many we had in two thousand and nine?
That is not a correct statement.
No, we're sixty-something.
Well, so, to clarify, we have, I believe, eighty-two point one full-time equivalents in the budget.
It's an FTE.
An FTE, yes, so there are sixty-some part, sixty-some full-time and an additional thirty or forty part-time, which gets to the eighty FTE.
Full-time equivalents, we're up to eighty-two.
Okay.
I would like to go back, look, let's pull it up, because I'm not going to say a number, but I'm betting you that it was substantially less. And I know that that's a hard thing to think of, that that represents people's jobs, but it's ultimately, it's the public that's paying that. And, you know, if it means that we don't fill positions for a while, I think that's something we have to look at.
And then how do, and then how do we evaluate positions that are important versus positions that are not?
We do that, that's happened before, where you make some determinations.
I mean, I, I appreciate the city manager saying, you know, let's not look at laying off staff, I think that's terrible. If we're going to look at that way, then I think we also should look like they did when I used to work for the city, it's, people take some, some kind of a cut, you make, you work less hours, you take a, a reduction in time, if it's five percent, four hours a week or whatever, instead of, I realize that a position gone is more of a savings than somebody just getting four hours.
Yeah.
But, but I would like to think, see if, because I, I, I don't know how many departments you would talk to, and they could say, I could get, you know, I could drop a couple firemen, I could drop two or three people in Public Works, I mean, if you really looked at that, I don't know how, planning, you know? I don't know how you would do that. So if we're going to look at something that's in the salary level and level of service.
Half of our general fund expenditures are for employees, I mean, that's just a given.
I totally understand, and I think that's the way of the world and business, however, I mean, I had suggested that they also look at different insurance companies, maybe we could do something to save money there, but I, if we're going to talk about employees.
Right, I had talked about, why aren't we collecting harbor use fees or admissions fees from the, all the people that use the casino dive park? I mean, it requires a process, it requires the harbor department helping to enforce that.
Are you referring, Pam, just for clarification, the ones that come from the mainland?
Mm-hmm.
Scott, are we able to collect monies from businesses that have sold their dive tours or, they come to the, they sell them on the mainland, they come over here to our dive, to the dive park?
It's, it's a harbor use fee for using our harbor, they have to pay.
I thought you.
And we, we.
That we can't do it if they've sold the tickets outside the city limits.
No, I don't believe so. I believe, and I believe our previous discussion about three years ago with the harbor was that we could, we amended the code to allow that to be imposed, the problem would be regulating it and making certain, you know, who was, who was coming to the harbor.
So we expanded the harbor to include that out there.
Right.
But if people are, okay, so for further clarification, if people are selling tickets for something out in the interior, and they're, they're selling them in the interior, we don't get any of that, but they could sell it and then they come into the, okay, never mind.
Because they're using, it's a harbor use fee.
What about the emissions tax?
That's a tax.
Would be a tax, that would be a tax.
If they're selling it outside city limits.
There, there is case law that says, it depends, we actually could prorate, but it was too much of a headache to try to do it, because essentially what somebody's doing is putting somebody in a bus and driving a quarter of a mile to go to the exterior.
Right.
Yeah, that's the distinction.
If, if, yeah, if it's the emission, and then it's, if it's a, if you're not, if you're going outside the city, yeah, then it's an issue of proportioning it, but if you are, the harbor use fee, if they're driving, driving the boats.
If they're using our facilities, right.
Bringing the boats for play in the harbor, we can, we can do that harbor use fee, it's just a matter of how do you enforce it.
Yeah.
So let me ask a question, does somebody like the Island Company, let's say, that they have offices in Irvine, are they booking and taking money in Irvine on, on credit cards over the internet?
I think in Colorado.
In Colorado, so we don't get any of that?
No, we do.
No, we do.
I mean, if it's for an activity here.
Oh, even if it's sold in Colorado?
Yeah.
Okay.
The activity takes place here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I was just going to complete my thought, I mean, I think that the, the most palatable, and it still doesn't feel good, is the cross-channel, because we can raise a lot of money in a limited amount of time, and it shares, spreads the cost to visitors as well as, as residents, but.
But just as an harbor fund, though.
Well, we use cross-channel funds, well, but that's where our need is right now.
Right, for all the improvements to the model.
All the improvements that we don't have, we're not able to pay for, relate to the harbor primarily, right now.
And the sewer.
Well, the sewer has to, I mean, there has to be some planning with Townsend and Audra that we get grant funds, there's no way, if we have any kind of major deal, that we can, we can pay for that. And that's what we've always done with major projects like that, is USDA.
Yes, there should be grant funds available for that, and that'll come off that capital list, so this get, we are doing both the energy audit, and then we've applied for grant funds for the reclaimed water analysis, which will look at our plant, we already have all of our other sewer infrastructure in that two thousand and thirteen plan for that twenty-year project, put all that in a brand-new CIP, and then we can see what those costs will be, and then we can also look what grants are available and start applying for that, because then that will have the engineering to back it up, and the studies to back it up for what we can go out and go for. So that's, that's what we're working on right now, we're setting ourselves up for that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm rolling my eyes, because the reclaimed project, water project, I think is a big pie in the sky, we're going to have some major sewer problem before that, and we're going to realize that we can't deal with what we need to deal with, but that's just, it's already been approved, so I guess I have no say in that.
Okay, let's just throw, increase in the cell tax by two point five percent, point two five percent, any takers?
So we would need to get state legislature approval?
No, just voter approval, the, the state's already exempted, the state's already passed laws that allow us to.
Allow anybody.
Allow anybody that's not already at the cap, and we're not at the cap, we're not at the state imposed cap yet.
And what's the cap, I'm sorry, you took.
Well, it's, it's, well, it's ten and a quarter percent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for us, yeah.
Okay.
But, right now, we have a ten percent tax, and there's a handful of MTA-related half-cent, quarter-cent sales taxes, some of those are exempt by state legislature, state legislative action, are exempt from the calculation of the cap, that's how we get this. You know, you know, I did want to state something, though.
Okay, so wait a minute, what about Prop H that the county just adopted, the county's doing a stormwater, that's a sales tax that they're proposing?
We're exempt from the stormwater one.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, well, well, here, here's the, here's the other thing, though, I mean, that's a good point, is, right now, we can go to the voters, but the county's always looking to go to the voters to raise taxes.
Right.
And they're talking about a homeless tax and a bunch of other stuff, it's all needed, the money's needed, but their taxes.
No, they're, they already approved, I mean, that was a.
So if they get out ahead of us, then it'll negate our ability to get out there. I wanted to mention, though, something that Councilmember Ollie, in our briefing yesterday, came up with, is that there, we need to take a look at this and we need to research, there's some charges that the general fund are, is absorbing, such as the entire sheriff's budget, which probably part of that could be charged to the harbor, because they, you know, under the state titans law, the titans needs to pay the cities for services that are provided to them. Right now, the general fund is paying for the entire sheriff's contract. There's other, other expenditures like that, perhaps.
But, but it's just putting onus on one of the other departments, it's putting it in the harbor instead of.
But if we were to look at doing this cross-channel carrier surcharge for a three-year period, then we could offset some of the general fund expenses by putting those into the harbor, and if this had a short-term sunset date, then that's much more palatable than.
Right.
I, I, I think the agenda I'm talking about, talking about increases should probably go through, be held over for the next one, because that's, there's a lot of things that come to mind about what are the ins and outs of it, you know, we don't want to shoot Greg in the foot, and, you know, if, if we did it with the sunset, you know, that also might help the hospital, because if they want to go in for theirs, they just go in for theirs after the sun, after the sunsets.
So then it's not simultaneous, which, that was going to be my next recommendation is, before we, personally, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not for sales tax increase or admissions tax increase, I could put a lot of time and effort into looking at the possibility of transient occupancy tax, but that's not going to happen in the next five minutes. The cross-channel surcharge, I think there's a conversation that really should happen with the cross-channel carriers, and it's very frustrating that three different, you know, entities have talked about doing this, but hasn't actually really sat down and talked to the cross-channel carrier providers to see what is the impact, and how much time has any of the three entities sat down with the Chamber of Commerce to understand the, you know, the visitor reviews and the number-one concern that we have? So, I mean, it's, it is a short-term solution to help us with a harbor fund, it's a, it's an easier sunset, it does have some value in setting up the. It does have some value in setting up the hospital for its possible 2020 tax measure. But I, I think we need to include everybody in the conversation, not just make the determination to do it. And, and I'll end with, you know, I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable adopting a budget that I don't feel good at the start of. And I mentioned that yesterday when I met with you guys, that I was, I feel very uncomfortable because this isn't the first time that we've had awkward numbers. And I don't wanna leave staff hanging to where you can't move forward, you can't make decisions. JJ can't fix things because we haven't adopted the budget. Bob can't move forward because we haven't adopted the budget. So I feel in a situation that's quite the pickle because I feel like I'm hindering the operations of the city by not moving forward on the budget. But then I wanna be very clear that I'm extremely uncomfortable with all of the data that's been presented. So, um, you know, if the general consensus is to hold off, what is the damage that that's gonna create to the city?
Okay, so let me ask you a question. You're talking about, somebody made a comment about the 45 days until the audit thing. But is 45 days, is that even logical, whatever that 45 days was? You mentioned 45 days only, right?
Until the audit's completed.
Yeah.
And then we have a set number to start from. But that's only 2017. That's not even the 18 budget. So we're still a whole nother six months, maybe eight months at the rate that things happen in the city of Avalon. We're another eight months away from having the audited statements for 2018.
But that's only one of 17. We don't want 18. That'll get us caught up. That'll give us starting numbers for 19.
16, 17 is done.
16, 17 is done.
I'm after the number, okay.
15, 16 is done.
15, 16 is done. 16, no. We're two years...
So, so my question that I want, I opposing to city staff, if we do not adopt a budget for another 45 days, what is the damage that that does to the operations of the city?
Well, we continue to operate. On the operating side, I think we're probably okay because we proposed a flat budget to the city council anyway on operations. But capital side though, Bob's working with last year's budget. So I don't know, I, I, we're a general law study, you have to, you know, turn to the city attorney. But generally, you know, in some cities that have their own charter, for example, if this council does not adopt a budget by the end, by June 30th, then the current budget becomes the operating budget until they do adopt the budget. So we're a general law study. I don't know how that, how state law applies to that. But basically, we're operating today with last year's budget. And I think the biggest impact would be on capital projects. Because this year's capital projects list is different than last year's. Some of it, some of it is a continuation.
No, actually, it's basically been the same list for the last three years and the money never gets spent and it gets...
But Bob's got a different list for this.
Over to another, wow.
Well, I, I, I just don't see that the bottom-line numbers are going to change much. I mean, I, I wouldn't, but I see two that don't wanna adopt the budget.
I don't know. I went from 6.5 million to 3.9.
Well, they did. They found that information and they revised that, so... So I don't have a problem with that and, and, but it sounds like it, even if it only won it, it looks like it's gonna be a two-to-two, so it's not gonna pass anyway. Right? Kids? Okay, so you're not...
We can certainly amend the existing budget if there's some kind of capital thing that Bob needs to do immediately that he doesn't have funding for in the current budget.
Yes, we could do that.
We could do that.
I just see...
I just would like to have...
Well, you could adopt...
I'm just disappointed when you both say this bad numbers. I know you're starting with wrong stuff. You've been working with them. I just don't, I'm, I'm frustrated that you two are so frustrated with them, with the numbers and like, I just, I don't understand. I mean, I'm understanding all...
I'm, I'm not frustrated with them. I'm frustrated with the situation. I'm frustrated that this is, for four and a half years now, we've been dealing with this. And, and I ran my platform four and a half years ago on getting the city finances in order. We're now on our third finance director in four and a half years. And I'm frustrated that we keep getting situations like this. It's not the person, it's the situation. And so you don't make decisions to spend millions of taxpayers' dollars to do things when you're not comfortable with the beginning numbers. And, and we're, we're not comfortable because we're finding things that were, that are unfortunate. And so I, I just don't feel confident. I feel confident that what each department wants to do for this year, okay, do, give that, but if all of a sudden through the audit process, we find another million dollars, now we're at, now where do we sit? Right now, we're sitting at, at the end of the year at $3 million. How many operating months is that for the city? How many?
It's the magical three months.
Yeah, we're in two months.
Four and a half million is good for three months.
Well, it'd be three.
It doesn't make me feel comfortable.
I don't know.
And I don't feel comfortable going out on the street to the people who voted for me thinking and knowing that I have a sense of financial education and me trying to say, "You know what? You're right. I don't feel good with a budget, but hey, let's move forward."
Okay, I guess I, I, well...
It's not a person and it's not you guys.
I know, I know.
It's the situation.
So the audit stuff is in their hands or no? Everything is still sitting on our desks?
The audit, if you're asking, well, we're working on the audit right now. We expect to get it done in 45 days.
To give them the information and then, okay, but then...
And then we'll have one more year. We can confirm our numbers at the end of that.
Right. So, I mean, yeah, we're not gonna get an answer from the auditors until November, December, probably.
No, we're gonna get the 17 audit done. We don't have a 17 audit. We have a 16 audit. So, so Matt went back to the 16 audit because those are numbers that were, that were confirmed.
Bob, Bob came in in November of 2015, November of 2015?
I don't remember. I wasn't here.
Well, we had Chris Boyd Dick here all the way through the end of 2016 fiscal year.
All right, and I'm just gonna suggest that if something pops up in the 16, 17 audit, you're gonna look at the 17, 18 audit to see if the same mistake was made, right?
Well, that's logical, yes.
Like if you booked something incorrectly in the one year, you're gonna go ahead and look ahead.
Exactly.
So I, that would give me a comfort level about, wasn't it for you?
Mm-hmm.
For both the years?
Well, one thing I wanted to suggest, you could tonight adopt the capital budget.
And that, he's not able to work.
Okay. So then what's the direction of the council? You'd like us to wait and then we come back at the end of the audit and give you the numbers?
I think that, that we would like to have the discussion with the cross-channel carriers and the chamber about what that might look like, 'cause it seems like there's some consensus that if we're gonna do something, that's maybe what we would do. And my, I, I mean, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but I, I, I know from, from my part, and that's kind of what I heard other...
That's, that's the easiest thing to do. We don't have to go to the electorate. We can just do it.
But I think if you go to the electorate down the, I'm sorry, councilman, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm lost.
That was the easiest thing to do, you said?
No, that's the easiest thing to do. We have the time to talk to the cross-channel people to find out what would be a good implementation time board so it doesn't screw them up. And gives these guys enough time to get the budget done, get the audit done, and they come back, plug in the right beginning numbers. And I don't think we're saying to change anything in the budget.
And that's when?
In 45 days.
Can we, can I ask if we can amend the current budget to allow Public Works and Harbor projects to continue on to a reasonable amount? We would bring that to you with a proposal as well as, I, as either 13 fiscal year, 13, 14, or 14, 15. We were very late in adopting the budget and Scott had recommended that we adopt a resolution that allowed us to continue on, on the existing budget. So... Can we do that?
Yeah. Yes, you, you, you could do that. Again, the budget is, again, it's the city's guideline for how it's to spend the money. You should have a budget. It's not, you know, it, it does not prevent you from going forward and spending money.
Bob, how, what is the impact to you, Bob Greenlaw? What is the impact to you if we do not adopt the budget tonight? What projects do you need to have now?
The mall phase one is just gonna bid, so it, you know, you're gonna start seeing cash flow. And I think I, I've got a cash flow analysis of all the projects and, you know, and city manager and finance director has that.
And that's already part of the 17, 18 budget?
Yeah, it's part of the 17, 18 budget, but it's, uh, yeah, there was, there was a big chunk of it that was already in there. So it, it should be fine, okay? And actually, for the cross-channel, if we did that surcharge, we had actually proposed that it'd start like January 1st. That's what the cash flow looked like, that, that would be able to be accomplished. So that was to give time for the cross-channel carriers and, and to be prepared for this and for everybody in the community to be prepared for it. So, um, uh, it, it would be, we already had the Green Pier. If we go into that emergency condition on that, to get that done. And then also, we also had Pebbley Beach Road Revetment Project in this current year too, so...
Those, that one wasn't part of last year's?
That was part of last year.
Oh, I'm sorry, the current year. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay. So if we, if we were to hold off, you're not...
I think that the, if there was something that came up, then I'll come...
Then you would come.
I'll come and it'll be like the next meeting if I, and I'll check in and see that we're okay. By the next meeting, if there's some action we had to take, then, then I'd make sure that we do that, okay?
I think realistically, the only, I'm trying to think the, the, you know, what's out there. And I don't know what all the grants applications require. I know for some federal grants, you have to have an adopted budget. And so not having a budget may impede on certain grants, your ability to, to really compete for them.
The only grants I hear that we're applying for are planning grants. I haven't heard of any other projects that are ready to be submitted.
For the Five Corner, we did, um, uh, make an application for the ATP and that was for an infrastructure piece. That's where the match portion, uh, we already have a...
But that project's already engineered. I mean, everything's been done.
Yeah, yeah, and it, and that's, has some time before, you know, that all takes place.
But there's no other grant proposals ready to go?
It was just the ATP planning grant and, yes.
So the first meeting in October, we should have the budget. That's 50 days from now, 51 days from now.
On the first meeting in October, um, as I recall from previous conversations, that some council members are not gonna be here.
We were gonna try to do a meeting the following week. Are you back the following week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just...
Right.
Well, there'll be three of us.
There'll be three of you. Go for it.
I won't go for it.
You won't be there? Why's everybody bailing at council meetings?
'Cause I'm gonna go represent the city in Seattle at the ferries conference, trying to get us money for cross-channel carriers.
Well, that's great, okay. So, no, that is good. I didn't mean, self-faceticious. Okay, so you made a comment about salaries. So let's just, let's just investigate that for a little bit.
I made a comment about overall numbers, not salaries.
Okay, so the overall num, salary number is what?
5.9 million.
Okay, so why, what if we said, if everybody wanted to go home and have a little math project, say every department cut their salaries by 10% and see what they come up with?
Well, we have MOUs, we have, I don't know that that's practical.
Well, we used to do it. We can't do it anymore?
People agree.
You, you definitely cannot do that across the board. So you're gonna go, I, I mean, I'm just, correct me where I am going to be wrong at some point. But you cannot just say, "Hey, fire department, we're just not gonna have a captain on this shift," or, "We're just not gonna do this."
I, I understand that, but, but I think people could, I think there's ways to think creatively. And, and if that's, if we don't wanna touch salaries, but she brought it, Pam brought it up.
Well, I just, I, I was talking about numbers.
Yeah, well, that's a big number. So if, I mean, I'm not saying I'm a proponent of it. I'm just saying if that needs to be an exercise.
I think what we do is the department heads probably are listening to this this evening and they will start thinking about it.
Well, I know, and that's why it's it.
I, I believe the comment that Pam made was, "We should look at a hiring freeze." That was what I believe your words were. "I would entertain a hiring freeze for any new employees or filling in part-time employees that are currently vacated." But I am going to just say, "I am not in favor of cutting salaries and I'm not in favor of cutting employees."
And that's not what I suggested, right?
No.
I, okay, but I have a question. So repeat that again. So we lose, we lose a...
So Kurt, can I?
We lose the department heads in all places?
That's a very good...
So we have a full-time person. I have a full-time person that's distributed between finance and recreation and the front counter. I have a part-time Public Works, a full-time Public Works. So those three positions are, are on hold. So if that would be the direction. We also have, if there was gonna be help in administration for, for me, the Assistant City Manager. And so just say the simple position of the front counter that helps recreation and finance, taking in all the monies and all that. You, you saw what Yoffit was doing out there at the front counter all the time. If we were not to hire that position, I would like to come back with policy from council and how, whether we should have certain hours, say, for just commuter subsidy or certain hours just for the taxi tickets and the vehicles, however, I said that wrong, but like four hours and four hours. The front counter just closes every day from 12 to 1:00. Or the city hall as a whole closed between certain hours. So we'd like to, if we're not gonna fill that position, then we do need to have some type of, of change in how...
Right.
And then like when my vehicle clerk that covers the front counter, that will be doing all that, when he's absent, um, I'm gonna have to come up with a plan for which departments we would rotate in, 'cause I've been giving thought, thought to this and that affects all the other departments too. So, um, I guess I need to know, am I filling positions or am I, that are currently in the budget? They're all, those are all in the budget.
Well, we definitely...
And there, you know, there, and there are some, are some other things that we could do, like with the vehicle licenses, split the alphabet instead of doing them all within a certain period, you know, spread them out a little more so that you're not doing it from, you know, as many...
Right, absolutely.
Hours to get it done in a week or something. I, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying and it's not easy to suggest that, but I just think in terms of being fiscally responsible, which is what we have an obligation to do, that one of the things we need to look at is, for some reason, it's taken a whole lot more people to do what we used to do with fewer people. And there's a cost associated with that. And, and if, I, I, I'll be honest with you. I, what I hear from people is they don't really see much of a benefit. And so to go to them and say, "We want you to pay more," I think is a hard task.
We might have more people on staff, Councilmember Albers, but things have changed where we have more requirements to do. where we have more requirements to do, capital improvement projects have increased drastically, there's just a greater demand. I really feel that there aren't any needless positions, and I understand about being fiscally responsible, and that is your job, absolutely. So, I am not in agreement that we have way too many staff members just floating around, you know, eating bonbons, so.
I wouldn't mind entertaining the point two-five percent tax.
Can Chair speak?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, she was standing, I'm sorry, Chair.
I just wanted to say something on behalf of the employees. First of all, the city went through a cost study a couple of years ago, and determined that many positions, what their salaries were going to be compared to the rest of the state, and they were brought to that, some were higher, and they have not had increases to bring them back down to what it is everywhere else, who are not paid more generally than the rest of the state for the same positions. The other thing is that we're already down mechanic, we're down a code enforcement officer, we're down, I think, four or five public works employees. You're worried about raising the warfage fee, because you're afraid that people won't come here. Well, if they come here and there's cigarette butts all over the ground, if there are missing papers, if there are potholes, if, you know, the sand isn't groomed, you know, what are the people going to think? This is not the town it was ten years ago. The Island Company, with a lot of hard work and money, has brought the area up. We have to maintain it. We need to make sure that the Chamber of Commerce is presenting a good town for people to come to. We're competing with a lot of other places. You're down a mechanic. We've been, we've been down at least one, if not more, patrol boat all summer. What if we have a storm? What if we're down two patrol boats? Because we don't have enough mechanics at the victim. What if they're down a fire truck, an ambulance? You know, we have a lot of emergencies here.
Why haven't we filled those positions before? Are these just newly opened positions?
No, no, they're not.
So, they're not even included in this budget, or they are?
They are included in the budget. The one mechanic that is down, that's a personnel issue.
Okay.
Now, I appreciate, I appreciate your...
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, knowing, hearing that. I certainly don't mean to, I'm not attacking the city employees by any means, I'm trying to, okay, Chair.
Well, I think that there's, I saw Jordan do that, too. I think that there is conversation that could happen about change in policy, and I love the idea of saying, we're only doing vehicle stickers from eight to noon, or we're only doing them from one to five, whatever that is. That actually frees up staff to do, you know, the other projects that they need to do. So, that's a good policy change. I would love to hear more, more ideas from others of some other things that we could do. Maybe we, you know, is it easier for some of the, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there, is it easier to have some of public work staff working in the middle of the night? Probably not, because all the trash really accumulates between two and six. You know, I'm, it's just an idea, but I'd love to see staff come up with some other policy things that maybe we could do, that maybe if we had particular projects that could get done a lot quicker, if there were no interruptions, if there was not, you know, five thousand people trying to play Frogger on Front Street, getting from point A to point B, you know, are there some solutions that we can still get the job done at maybe different times? I don't know. And I think if we were, even if we do talk about a full-time hire, or a hiring freeze, whatever that is, I think it needs to be clearly defined, because we, the city council, have been pushing you specifically, Denise, as the city manager, to staff up administration so that we're back in operations the way we were. I don't like that.
Well, okay, again, I'm still willing to entertain at some point that point two-five percent sales tax. I know that primarily affects the visitor, not so much local, because there's no tax on groceries, and if we're not at our cap...
We're at what, nine point two-five right now?
We're in the town, we're at ten.
We're at ten.
But we've got another, we've got another point two-five we can go.
Yeah, we're at ten, current.
And...
That's been a long time since I...
And what was the, what was your opinion? I think, I don't know why, I think we should look at TOT, I mean, there's a couple ways we could go. We could, this could be popular, increase it to, increase it to thirteen and reduce the amount of money we give the chamber by a percent, and that would give us two percent.
Election.
Huh?
Election.
That's an election thing, but those, so those are things that we can talk about going forward, what everyone would do. I know that's not popular probably any way around, but, but I know there's always discussions about the TOT and how much is given to the chamber, and I'll just put it out there, Jim's heard it before, I'm not saying anything new.
But we need an agenda item for all this kind of stuff.
Well, okay.
Well, you can talk about, to actually do it, you can, you can give direction on terms of the budget discussion, is to come back with, you know, the specific dates that each tax would be imposed and how to structure it.
And how much money that would be, and...
Yeah, you know.
Okay, okay.
I think, just reflecting on the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just think that we really need to have a set of pros and cons for each one of these.
Yeah.
And I think some further conversations need to happen, we need to have a conversation with cross-channel carriers, more than just, just, you know, one particular cross-channel carrier, and then I think, you know, if we're going to go out and put all the effort into doing a sales tax increase, what are the pros and cons with that? How much is it going to cost us? How much effort are we going to put into that, public relations-wise? For all of those things, I think we need a pro and con, and whether that means that, you know, one or two of us on the council sit with city staff, finance, however that, you know, whoever that person is going to be, and help participate in that. I think that needs to happen before we just decide and give direction that, hey, let's just go look at transient occupancy tax. I mean, it's, let's get a basics of what some pros and cons would be, let's include Jim in the conversation, or, let's include some of the, you know, some of our, maybe our retailers, maybe, yeah.
And some of the general public.
Right.
That aren't business owners.
Right.
That aren't business owners.
That aren't business owners, because they have an opinion as well.
Everybody has an opinion.
I know, that's why the fellows are up here. Okay, well, then, there you go.
Do we need a motion?
To not approve the budget?
No, I think we've given direction.
I've given direction, and it's, I don't know if you were going to vote for it, I was going to vote just so they could move forward, but, but anyway.
I mean, I would, regardless of which way I voted, it would have not...
Exactly.
You know, so I was...
Exactly. Okay, okay, so we're going to go into the Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting, and Ollie, take it away.
And Corv. I'd like to call order the Avalon Municipal, Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting.
Thank you, staff.
Tuesday, August 7th.
And Jim.
They're banning that.
I'm sorry.
They're leaving us.
I'm sure you can handle that.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Before you start the hospital, I still need clarification.
Okay.
I understand that I am going to reach out to the chamber, cross-count carriers, and some public, I want to have a conversation regarding TOT and sales tax, how that would affect everything. I know that there would be a hiring freeze, but am I filling the four positions that I have in the budget?
That's Assistant City Manager.
Full-time public works, part-time public works, and the mechanic is, is already in there, yeah, but it's in there, it's in the budget, so.
We're on hold, there's just nobody in there.
That position hasn't vacated or anything, so it's there.
We're just down to that four percent.
And then the front counter personnel, but that is part of finance and recreation.
Do you want to talk to Bob again about that halftime, or that one and a half time people, and get an opinion from him? Before you, he just left, but, I mean, before we say, don't hire them, because they're in the budget, but are...
They're already budget in those line items, yes.
I know, but, but...
Yeah, I'm just going to say, because, so it's not like somebody's losing their job, there are jobs that have been vacated, that our construction companies in this town are dying. They are dying. There's no water, there's no development, there's no nothing, and to some extent, I almost feel like, wouldn't it make more sense for small projects, where nobody's going to bid it from over town, because they're not going to be able to mobilize people and do something, to hire local contractors to do some of this construction stuff? I mean, Bob seems to have more than he can even supervise, I mean, there's just so much going on.
We could certainly explore that idea, Pam. I had gotten the impression from council, maybe it wasn't this one previously, that why are we having so many contracts with consultants and contractors?
Well, and maybe I'm presuming that it could be done...
Cheaper.
Cheaper.
That was always our, certainly, I can entertain that idea, I'll run it by Mr. Greenlaw, and...
Well, and I...
And I'm talking about, you know, smaller things, like the casino bathrooms, and, you know, the stuff that he's talking about doing with own forces, with our own forces.
Do we have to do prevailing wages when we do those things?
Yeah, you have to do prevailing wages, when you would contract out, and then it's a matter of, you know, you wanted to find everything, you contract out, you want to have everything the city does defined as maintenance, because if it's a building, something over five thousand, you're required to go out to bid.
Right.
Well, and that's interesting, everybody I know that wants to find a contractor to do work, they're also busy, so I don't know, I don't know who right now...
Okay, well, maybe, maybe somebody caught me and, you know, told me, or a couple of people...
Well, they're always there, because the city goes elsewhere, and gets, you know, and everybody else is going now, you know, I'm coming, everybody else is using mainland people, and, so I think that, but everybody that I know is really busy. Now, maybe after summer, there may be, there may be a slowdown, but I know people that want remodels, and they, they just can't find people to do it, so.
Yeah, okay.
But, but, I mean, I think that's good, if we can use them, that would be great. Yeah, okay, okay.
Can we go back to the hospital?
Yes.
No, I think the question was, what are we going to do in terms of those positions? And it sounds like, I mean, I've heard loud and clear that, obviously, those, except for maybe checking with public works, that...
Yeah, maybe check the public works and see if he does need the one and a half.
Assistant City Manager position is something we're going to go forward with.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor.
I'm back to calling the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting to order for Tuesday, August 7th, at 5:00 p.m., I think we're a little late. Can we have the roll call?
Trustee Albers?
Here.
Trustee Caskey?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Chairman Olson?
Here.
And for the record...
And for the record, trustee Hernandez is... Do we have any announcements?
No.
We have none.
Oh, perfect. Do we have any written communication?
I have none.
Oh, perfect. Any presentations?
There are none.
Ah, now it's time for all communication. Members of the public may address the Board of Trustees at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers shall limit themselves to three minutes. Got anything, Jim?
We have two items on consent calendar, actions from the June 19, 2018 Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting. Item two, we have CEO Board Report for July 2018, and the CFO's narrative analysis for June of 2018. Recommended action is to receive and file the reports.
Any trustee have any questions about any of these items?
No, I was just going to comment that I thought it was very good to see that the days that billing is in accounts receivables dropped pretty significantly, and that's a big marker, so that's, that's a good thing.
Okay, hearing them, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Make motion on items one and two.
Second.
Call for a question. Oh, wait, Jim, you got any questions?
All answers.
General business?
There is none, and, but I have, would like to know, did you like getting the entire packet electronically of the CFO's reports?
Yeah. All right, it was great to say that.
Okay, no general business, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
And now, we'll be going into closed session.
We have one closed session. Item number two, confidence of legal with real property negotiators regarding the Avalon Fuel Doc, Councilmember Cassidy will be recusing herself from this due to income from the Avon Company.
And I'm not going to hang around, so I'm going to say goodnight, Tony.
Are you going to give us a table?
And we are back from closed session.